At this time, I would like to call the meeting, the regular meeting of the city council. Today is Monday, September fourteenth, and this meeting is now called to order. Could we all kindly please rise for the pledge to the flag? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, at this time, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Digi Avani?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Here.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present. Thank you, ma'am, city clerk. The next item on the agenda is we're going to have a few presentations tonight. So I'd like to first start off with Bay Shore Neighborhood Committee, Community Food Assessment. And I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Stephanie Chow and Tiffany Jiao of Stanford School of Medicine. Good evening, you Tiffany. And do we have Stephanie with you? Oh, yeah.
Yes, I'm present.
Okay, great. Okay, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Before Stephanie and Tiffany get their presentation, I just wanted to briefly provide some background information. So in September twenty eighteen, in light of the proposed redevelopment of Midway Village, the Housing Division applied to Get Healthy San Mateo County for funding to look at how access to amenities can be improved for residents in Midway Village. Get Healthy San Mateo County, a program of the county public health to build healthy and equitable communities, worked with housing staff to refine this proposal, which resulted in a proposal to conduct a community food assessment for the Bay Shore neighborhood. In May of twenty nineteen, the council accepted and appropriated funds for the Bay Shore Community Food Assessment. The city partnered with UC Cooperative Extension to conduct the assessment, which led to a partnership with Stanford University School of Medicine, when two of its graduate students were hired as research assistants for the project. I now present Tiffany Jiao and Stephanie Cho, who worked on this project and will now be sharing their findings.
Thank you, Linnell. Thank you.
Thank you, Linnell, for the introduction. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to share our findings from our Bay Shore Community Food Assessment. My name's Tiffany Jiao, and I'll be presenting with my colleague Stephanie Cho, and we're two Stanford graduate student research assistants for this assessment. The goal of this project was to assess the current access and nutritional needs in order to improve the health of Bay Shore residents. The diagram on the right highlights the potential downstream and upstream impacts of a community food system assessment. A key part of a community food assessment is the input from community members and key stakeholders.
Our timeline for this assessment took place over the course of a year and spanned the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. We interviewed seven community organizations and fourteen residents of the Bay Shore neighborhood and conducted an assessment of grocery stores in or nearby Bay Shore, utilizing the USDA's Nutritional Environment Measured Survey. At this point, we're in the initial stages of disseminating the findings. So through our assessment, we learned that the Bay Shore is an evolving neighborhood with new oncoming housing, development, and economic investment. Additionally, the Bay Shore is currently designated as a low-income and low-access census tract and is a relatively geographically isolated neighborhood. The dynamic interactions of these various factors bring to light obstacles in food access experienced by residents.
We would like to note that the following key findings are based off our interviews with residents and key community leaders and our grocery store assessments. The recommendations are intended for the Bay Shore community members and organizations, key stakeholders, and government agencies. These are opportunities to be considered in order to improve the food access in the Bay Shore neighborhood. Our first key finding found that the Bay Shore community is an evolving neighborhood with a strong sense of community identity and a rich history where people from different cultures live alongside each other. This word bubble depicts phrases and words used by residents and key community leaders to describe the Bay Shore neighborhood. The general theme was that the Bay Shore neighborhood is a tight-knit, diverse, and quiet community. Considering the finding that the Bay Shore is a tight-knit and evolving neighborhood, we recommend to explore options to support a resident-led community advisory board, which is a collective group of community members and organization representatives. The intent of the community advisory board is to function as a community-led and community-driven body in order to elevate the community voice for the current and future development of the Bay Shore neighborhood.
Our second key finding is that the majority of residents purchase groceries outside of Bay Shore due to a lack of grocery stores in the neighborhood. This map depicts chain grocery stores located within a four-mile radius of the western boundary of the Bay Shore neighborhood. The heat map depicts various categorizations of household median income, where red areas signify lower median household income and green areas of higher median household income. Overall, the map highlights the lack of chain grocery store investment in areas of lower household median income. For Bay Shore seniors or individuals without cars, accessing full-service grocery stores may be an obstacle in obtaining healthy foods. Because of the lack of nearby grocery stores, coupled with the increase in housing development in the Bay Shore community, we recommend exploring options for a new grocery store or food cooperative that is designed and informed by the needs and wants of the community members.
Our third key finding has shown that the COVID-19 pandemic has impacted food access and increased food insecurity in the Bay Shore community. As shown on the table, there has been an increase in number of households utilizing emergency food resources from Second Harvest Food Bank. Most notably, comparing February to July, Mid Penn Boys and Girls Club has seen a quadruple increase, and Peninsula Family Service has seen a double increase in the number of households receiving food distributions at these sites. Due to the impact of COVID-19, many households have seen an increase in need for food resources in the Bay Shore neighborhood. Our interviewees stated that having a pamphlet that outlines available emergency resources would be helpful during this time. It's important to note that who, it's important that those who need these resources have access to information to seek these resources, especially isolated seniors and working parents in the Bay Shore neighborhood. Our recommendation is to circulate documents on resources available to the Bay Shore neighborhood and target individuals who are most vulnerable to food insecurity during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Our fourth key finding is that for those without private cars, public transportation is a main transportation method Bay Shore residents use to access food. So the map on the left depicts public transit stops within the Bay Shore neighborhood. In blue are the Muni line stops, and in red are the Bay Shore shuttle stops. These lines connect Bay Shore residents to the rest of the peninsula. The closest Bay Shore shuttle from Midway Village is approximately point two miles, and the closest Muni stop is point five miles. This distance can be a challenge for residents, especially seniors. The table on the right shows annual trends in Bay Shore shuttle ridership. It depicts a general increase in ridership of the Bay Shore shuttle, which highlights its growing utility as a transit line for residents. In light of this finding, we recommend maintaining current transit routes, which are crucial to food access in Bay Shore. Additionally, additional routes, transit stops, or more frequent services will help improve food access in the future. Exploring routes that link passengers to other essential services, such as ethnic food markets, hospitals, pharmacies, and/or banks, will be important. And new routes should consider adding an additional stop closer to Midway Village.
Our last key finding we found from our interviews is that the Bay Shore community would like additional food resources that incorporate youth empowerment, community design, and provide accessible fresh fruits and vegetables. Some ideas mentioned by our interviewees for improving food access include community gardens, a youth-led food truck, and a farmer's market. Our longer report highlights local examples of these interventions in more detail. Therefore, our last recommendation is to explore options for establishing a farmer's market and/or a community garden within Bay Shore. And these programs should be led and informed by community members with assistance from other public or nonprofit entities.
This project would not have been possible, would not have been possible without the wonderful collaboration of the City of Daly City, San Mateo County Health Department, Stanford Medicine, and UCA-NR. And we would also like to acknowledge the individuals and organizations listed on the right. And this project would not have been possible without their time and input. Thank you so much, and we now welcome any questions.
Okay, Stephanie and Tiffany, thank you so much for your presentation, very, very in-depth. And you've definitely verified and validated the needs that is, that we feel is definitely apparent in the Bay Shore neighborhood. I'd like to thank you for that. So before I make any final comments, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues if they have any questions of either Stephanie or Tiffany.
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, council member Buenaventura, please.
Yeah, so thank you, Stephanie and Tiffany, for that really good presentation. It was very, I thought, informative and gave us a lot of things to think about. So some of the questions I had, so you talked about the ideas or the, what your findings are that it, that the Bay Shore area needs some, basically, stores for food, for groceries, I imagine. And the thing that I've always wondered is, what does the community, do you think the community wants in terms of how small or big the grocery stores should be? So the, the thing I wonder is, is the community more interested in like a major store like a Costco? Or are they thinking more of something like a Lucky's or Safeway? Or are they thinking more of smaller-type stores in the neighborhood? Like, you know, maybe the smaller Trader Joe's or Sprouts or something like that? And I'm also interested in the idea, because I think this is an opportunity to avoid the gentrification of the area. And, and so I wonder if, if that is a concern that the, the community has? And what are your recommendations regarding what you think the community is seeking in terms of, yeah, these grocery stores that we are, we are looking to try to improve the neighborhood with? Thank you.
Thank you so much for the question. Um, I would just like to start off by saying, um, I think the community is really open to having a new grocery store. Some folks have mentioned that, like a Trader Joe's or a Lucky's would be something they would be interested in seeing. However, that is not to say that a food cooperative would be just as effective and could efficiently serve the community. And I think that kind of addresses your question of whether or not, like, bringing in a big grocery store, like a chain grocery store, would add to the gentrification of the area. So, um, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Pam, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Again, just like everyone else, we know it's a great presentation, appreciate it. And something that we all hit on is, we would like the Bay Shore shuttle, maybe, hopefully, we can do some more stops. That's a, that's really one that we can probably work with as well. And identifying the farmer's market and where that placement would be, would be probably key, because I think that you did a great job of identifying something that we all know when we see our little seniors over there. They walk to their meetings down at Lawson Hall, and they really don't have car autos. And it's hard for them to get up certain areas in the hill. So that, we have to take into consideration, and I'm happy that you pointed that out and were able to speak with them, because I know that they do have that area up at the Boys and Girls Club, but I do know that that's difficult for those seniors to walk. You saw some of the hills, huh? It was pretty tough. So, so the placement of the farmer's market, like where it would be, and we partner with the people that we currently have in ceremony or how we would explore it. I think that's a great option, because it is a unique area. And I like that you even put in the exploration of the food co-op. Even if we did bring in something small, like a lot of them have mentioned Trader Joe's or something, that's not expensive as well, we have to remember the cost for them and the transportation. And then the new development will probably also have some of that in there as well to serve the low-income in that area. And so that they can be, feel really connected and not have to go outside their own community. I think that that is really advantageous, because sometimes they even have to go to, I'm sure they talked to you about it, outside in San Francisco or some area, and they want to keep their dollars in Daly City, but they don't have a choice. So I'm looking forward to, I guess, hopefully, that you guys will be involved in the area of seeing where we can, how we can implement, maybe get grants from our county or a farmer's market to sustain it over in that area. And, and work with our partners, especially with the partners at the Bay Shore School and have that parking lot, like where they currently do the second harvest. So I don't know if they'd be interested, maybe could partner with that, in an area that's flat for the seniors. So we can work that part out, but it's something that's long overdue. Appreciate it, and hopefully, we can move. I know it's COVID, but actually even more need. I know that they're having boxes delivered, which I appreciate by, someone in the Bay Shore picks up their boxes, their food from Second Harvest, and delivers it to them. But hopefully, ongoing so they can feel a little more independent and have and delivers it to them, but hopefully ongoing so they can feel a little more independent and have access. So I hope you you will be involved in this from henceforth and working with us and seeing if we can identify the next steps, how we get grants or whatever. And thank you, Lanell, as well. I know you work together altogether, and that's very appreciative because it's flourishing over there with such great love and community and pride. So we want to keep it that way. So thank you so much. This is a big excitement step in the middle of this COVID. So we can move forward and at least start somewhere, whether you recommend starting with the farmer's market or some point to start for access. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember Dejavani. Anyone else have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Vice Mayor Manalo, sure, you got the floor.
Thank you so much. First and foremost, yeah, thank you so much, Lanell, for taking the initiative to do the reach out and really apply for that grant and partnering with Stanford Medicine to do this extensive survey for the community in our community in Bay Shore. I think it was mentioned earlier, this just reinstates what we've heard from community members for many years around just the food desert and also just access to healthy food. And, you know, the the question is exactly that, to hear that they're open to having a co-op is something I haven't heard before, but I know they've always mentioned, can we have a grocery store, you know, in their neighborhood? You know, access to transportation was also something that they've been reiterating and seeing the statistics that you've provided around the increase of usage is very helpful so that when we do coordinate with other entities to to show that those numbers are increasing. You know, I think down the line, we have an opportunity to really be able to, you know, create and build some of the amenities that are long overdue in the Bay Shore community. And that's something down the pipeline. You know, we are working currently on building affordable housing on our Daly City land, but that's one piece of it. We're hoping that not even not even the large development, but maybe there are opportunities. Because right now, the Bay Shore area is an opportunity zone. And so maybe there are areas and pockets, not even, you know, that are very close to the school or whatnot. But maybe there are some of the empty lots that could actually be utilized. And, you know, these are some ideas I'm bringing forth, and maybe your team can look into it and see maybe where there can be really some opportunities, of course, with continuing continuing working with the beloved Bay Shore community, who's really, as you mentioned, is close knit and really has this strong community over there, and you've sensed it probably from speaking to all of the leadership and community members who have shown that through your interviews. I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time and, you know, studying our community in Bay Shore. And as as mentioned, let's look towards what we can do as we move forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do we have any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to add like one question and one comment. I'll probably start with the comment first. So the comment is like, thank you to Tiffany and Stephanie. Just to reiterate, my colleagues on council talk about studying our community and, you know, really identifying with Vice Mayor Manalo talking about in terms of a food desert. And it's, you know, talking and really contextualizing it within like today's unrest in terms of like systemic racism and how it's really related to environmental racism. So I want I want to commend you for identifying that. And my quick, my question is, from your study, why do you think that businesses or big, large chains don't want to go there when they know that there's a huge need?
Thank you for your comments. We've really enjoyed working with this community over this past half year and during the coronavirus has changed a lot of our methods. But to your question, I would say that I think the low-income status is probably a main factor of keeping businesses away if they can't provide income and profits within this community that's already receiving a lot of food, free food distributions. That could be a concern for why businesses might not want to invest in this area. But given the new housing that's going to be built there, I think there could be a potential for increase in economic activity and investment in this area.
Okay, thank you, Tiffany. Looks like everyone's pro. Okay, everybody's there. Okay, is there any other comments? I had another question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
You mentioned something earlier that I sort of got concerned about when you said that there is seems to be a communication issue also in that you're recommending that more more documentation be provided. So, I mean, are is your is your study, did your study reveal that there is maybe a problem with Wi-Fi connection or interconnect internet connection with with the seniors in particular? And I just, I'm wondering, what is the, if if you know, what is the availability of free Wi-Fi in that area? I know that in the library, for example, you can get the the Wi-Fi for free. But is that something that's an issue in terms of the the communication that might be we might be missing or needing to improve upon? Thank you.
Thank you so much for the question. We didn't particularly look at Wi-Fi access in our surveys, which that's something definitely that should be taken into account in the future. However, when we looked at lack of resources, it was more in regards to people who aren't embedded in these community structures such as Midway Village, Lawson Hall Senior Group, people who don't have these resources that can help them find find additional resources in times of need such as the COVID-19 pandemic. So for like one example, I spoke to a senior folk who couldn't get the food deliveries that Midway Village seniors were getting because she was not a resident of Midway Village. So it's it's challenging for people who don't have that community structure or that social support who aren't embedded in these structures. It's it's difficult for them to get the resources they need during these times. So in regards to seniors not having Wi-Fi, I'm not sure. I mean, I can say that most of them don't use email. When we try getting in contact with them, they preferred phone, like calling or texting, that sort of stuff. So that is something to consider in the future, I think, as well, that they they might not be using email or social media to get access to these resources.
Thank you, Stephanie, and unless there, I think Tiffany hit it on the head because I was wondering, and I didn't hear it about the through the presentation, and that is what the future is going to bring. And Tiffany hit it right on the nose, and I was going to make mention, 555 more units are coming out there to the Bay Shore. And if they think it's rough now, it's going to be worse later. So thank you for acknowledging that, Tiffany. That's a very, very important aspect. I would request that we can get a copy of your slides and you can have our city manager can hold it because Councilmember Dejavani also sits on a board called commute.org. And I remember when we I was on that board, every year they would try to substantiate, do we still need the shuttle? And what's very important is that folks show that they are using that shuttle so that we can keep that shuttle via a grant here in the Bay Shore districts here in Daly City. The other point I wanted to make, and this is to Vice Mayor Manalo, we need more collaboration. The city cannot do it all alone. How about a farmer's market at the Bay Shore Elementary School? I mean, it's something. And what happens there on the weekends? So I think to have a collaboration with the school district and, you know, hopefully we can work something out so that we can at least put a dent in some of these issues. But that's all I have to say. But I again, I thank you both so much. I'm hoping that we don't reinvent the wheel that the both of you and Lanell will be around as we continue to move forward, especially in our master plan and future development for that area. There's a term that the Bay Shore has been using, and that is we are the stepchild of Daly City. Well, we want to show them they are not, and we do care about them. And your presentation tonight, again, validates and verifies the need out there in the Bay Shore. So again, thank you so much, Stephanie, Tiffany, and Lanell for leading the charge. Okay, any more questions for Stephanie or Tiffany or Lanell at this time on their presentation?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank you for bringing it up about the commute.org. I appreciate that. And I'll work with the city manager and we'll be in touch with both of you and connect so that we can see something about the shuttle as well. So we can try to hit a couple of points as as indicated by my colleagues that to start somewhere. And even though we're in COVID, they still can get access, basically, the things that you laid out and some starting somewhere. So appreciate that, and I'll work with Shauna.
Thank you, Pam, and thank you for a reminder because based upon your statement you just made, I know transportation was an issue. I don't know if Stephanie or Tiffany knows of Peninsula Services to which they received a grant from Measure K Fund of San Mateo, which provides six round-trip tickets. It was basically for the seniors, either go to their doctors or to go shopping. So that's another resource in utilizing that grant, and hopefully that will continue on as well. So you see what happens when we all our heads together? Outstanding. So good deal.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Final words for Stephanie or Tiffany? No? Okay, just a smile. Okay, gotcha. All right, ladies, thank you so much, and we hope to see more of you in the future. You have a great evening, and thank you so much for joining us. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda is proclaiming September 2020 as National Preparedness Month. Now, normally Clyde Preston is here, but I see Joel Abelson. Are you going to be accepting the award tonight, Joel?
Yes, I am. Yeah.
I kind of thought so. You need to come by more often. It's good. It's good to see your face. Stephen, would you happen to have the proclamation in front of you? And if so, would you kindly read some of the whereas statements?
Sure.
I didn't mean to put you on the on the hook.
No, no worries. I have it open already.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the whole thing or just a few whereas statements?
Yeah, just a few of the important one whereas, please.
Okay, this is the proclamation for National Preparedness Month. It says, whereas during September, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and the National Preparedness Month Coalition urge all Americans to take some simple steps to make their families better prepared for emergencies. And with the COVID-19 pandemic of 2020, the Ridge Crest earthquakes of 2019, the Paradise Firestorm of 2018, the Loma Prieta earthquake of 1989, and the yearly winter storms in our county all will continue to have devastating effects on the people and the economy. And whereas the loss of life and property can be greatly reduced if appropriate preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a disaster. And whereas these lifesaving procedures will be highlighted during the month of September as the North County Fire Authority, City Emergency Services, and other service organizations provide disaster preparedness information to Daly City residents. Now, therefore, I, Glenn Celester, Mayor of Daly City and members of the City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as National Preparedness Month and encourage all Daly City residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to follow before, during, and after a disaster.
Thank you so much, Stephen.
You're breaking up a little bit for me at least. Yeah, other people are shaking their heads too. He's frozen right now.
I think maybe if Battalion Chief Abelson might say a few words.
Yeah. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Mayor City Council, it's good to see everyone and everybody else staff here. Joel Abelson, Battalion Chief, North County Fire Authority, I'm in charge of emergency planning for the department. And so I think it's really an appropriate time, you know, to be talking about this right now, you know, now the COVID, but with what's going on, you know, statewide with the fires. You know, I got to see firsthand a couple of weeks ago myself and 12 other members from North County Fire were up at the river fire in Salinas. You know, we were really kind of ground zero there and saw, you know, homes lost, the people there. And just to show how it just, you have to understand that we're really, really tight on resources these days with so many emergencies. You know, the resources just aren't there that we need. We're really dependent upon individuals taking steps to make it, you know, to to help each other because the more time we have to spend on your neighbor or yourself, you know, the less time vice versa. So it's really important to take these steps, kind of prepare, and just makes, you know, everything better for your community, yourself, and so forth. You know, please go out there, look at the, you know, the Department of Homeland Security has got a good website. We're working on our website, northcountyfire.org. We have some social media, stuff that goes out constantly. We're always kind of working to update that stuff. But, you know, it's a simple thing, making a plan, kind of thinking about these things. What happens if I have, you know, even if it's a smaller emergency such as a relatives fired at my house? You know, where am I going to meet my family and know that we all got the house? You know, so that when we show up there, we know that you're safe, and we can just work on the property and so forth. But yeah, watching, when I was in Salinas, I was really watching one thing that kind of caught my attention. I really, you know, give a whole lot of thought was I was like, work on the individual, you know, take care of your house and stuff. But how people are dealing with their neighbors, you know, they knew that certain people live by themselves, especially, you know, a little bit older, so forth. So really, you know, I would encourage you to probably think about your neighbors too. This is your communities or your family members don't live, you know, what are they going to do? You know, if we lose communication, how are you going to communicate with people? Is there someone out of state? You can identify as a, you know, if you contact them, let them know everybody's okay. Because nothing worse than not knowing where your family member is and whether they're safe or not. So use those resources, you know, it could happen here for sure, you know, with earthquakes, everybody kind of thinks of earthquake, but other emergencies happen here as well. So really kind of value, and I also encourage people to really use your social media to kind of spread the word. So if you go and think about, talk about something, I know we all talk about the kids and I'm a toilet paper, we can hurt the word. But, you know, we've seen that that kind of thing. I think most people have prepared themselves for that. But think about the other stuff and the challenges you find. I encourage you to share that with, you know, people on social media. See, I didn't even think about this. I didn't even think about, you know, what if I had to grab, if I had 20 minutes to get to my house, what would I grab? You know, and that's saying, you know, last thing you care about is your clothes and stuff like that. It's the pictures, you know, it's your important paperwork, the things you just can't replace. You really have to give some thought. So anyway, just, you know, take a minute to kind of think about those things, check out these websites. If you have questions, you know, contact us, contact the department. You know, firefighters love talking to people. So if you see us in the store, you see us on the street, you're not bothering us. You know, we like to talk. So for those who have been engaged before, you know, we're not we're not intimidating. We really enjoy being with people, you know, around people and talking about ourselves and fire safety. So thanks. Thank you again. And if you guys have any questions, do you have any answer, or you can always forward questions to me as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. I turned off my video, folks, because I have an unstable internet connection. And if I turn off the video, maybe that'll decrease the bandwidth. So I'm not being unsocial. Do we have any comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, may I? Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor. Go ahead, Vice Mayor. I'll defer to Vice Mayor first.
Dejavani. Okay, uh, yes, Vice, okay, Vice Mayor, uh, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, kind of lost you, but you're back, Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to say, my goodness, thank you so much to all of you working uh, the fires and just risking your lives um, for the community. And even more so now you're even saying, look, look, how can you create a plan? Cause you never know what might happen in our communities. Um, I think that just shows such care and leadership around um, preventive measures because when the emergency does happen, you know, you're kind of in a rush and you know, you want to be able to be prepared. And as we've seen with some of the folks that have shared their stories, like, you know, they're just rushing out and trying to uh, grab some of their belongings and, and really the most precious ones, important paperwork, but providing a framework and so that our community members understand how important it is to prepare just in case is, is really vital, you know? And I think uh, it's important for us to always uh, give that information out. And um, really how accessible you firefighters are even mentioning, hey, you know, if you have a question, feel free to ask us. Um, because we know we've seen just even in these um, unprecedented times, you know? Like we didn't know just as COVID hit us that there would be uh, a continuity of wildfires to this um, intensity. And so um, for everyone listening out there, please check out the website, you know, as, as Battalion Chief mentioned, like, look, you know, or you can, you can garner information and this is information that is useful for your family, um, for your friends or that senior that's isolated and living across the street, right? So thank you so much.
Mayor, are you there?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember De Giovanni, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well Battalion Chief, we wanted to say first of all that it's great to see you and uh, and thank you for coming back safely from your wildfires. And we know how great it is to have your expertise on board and couldn't be any prouder of our North County Fire Authority and especially our Daly City firefighters um, here in Daly City as they continue to fight the, who knows what happens from one day to the next as we know. And you know, from being on the ground that uh, every piece of equipment that we have from uh, the amount of that's on each one to everything has to be planned out for rescues on top of natural disasters. Like, you know, we also are prone to earthquakes that hopefully that, that will not hinder or be in any of this on top of our wildfires, but it affects all of us and being prepared, the more prepared we are, it helps all of you. So that's something else I want to tell the, um, it takes them for the rescue uh, for all of our community that um, and it lessens the stress of we're prepared for three days or however it's recommended from our North County Fire Authority with their expertise on what we need to look into. Um, it really will help them on the other side, even though they're stretched thin across our state and uh, everywhere for these, uh, when they get called to duty. So um, I appreciate it and you know, that thoughts and prayers don't seem enough uh, during these uh, times. And just when we start talking about one thing, it goes to one thing to another. And when we wake up tomorrow, we don't know, but, but being prepared, that's, that's the whole key of it. So um, big thank you. Um, there's not enough words to say on what you do. And we just passed nine 11 and the courage of a firefighter, of course, being biased on my end of family. But it's, it's incredible that you have a calling for that. And when you have a calling for that, then we need our community to support you. And uh, so again, everyone, you know that our firefighters are there for us to ask. And even when he, you see him back from wildfires, our battalion chiefs in their cars. They also are really um, accessible as well, even though it's COVID and we try not to have too much contact. But call them, go on the website, great information. You guys have YouTube information I saw as well, uh, for those that have access for that. So thank you so much and anything we can do as a community to come together, thank you, thank you for the safety of our community. Cause your lives matter um, and the everyone that you touch. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember De Giovanni. Um, any other comments at this time? Doctor Rod.
Quick, quick, Mayor. Yeah, um, so for those watching, ready.gov, I guess that's the URL address. R E A, all the information for the plan. I think it's really key. Um, make this plan when we're just seeing the now, I just want for the org guys to, and it's, it's key to at least have some access to these resource.
Doctor Rod, you were frozen there for a minute.
Oh. Oh, yeah. Uh, I was done. I was just wanting to promote the website, ready.gov. You know, uh, pick up website, pretty easy, pretty accessible for everything to do. I'll pass the mic back to the mayor.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Rod. Uh, you were breaking in and out, but I heard that last word, Mayor. So anyway, all right, thank you so much. Uh, Joel, um, I, I didn't know if I saw your picture of one of the, uh, the firemen sleeping on the grass on site. Or was that you sitting in the truck with uh, carbon uh, all over your nose and in front of your face? But anyway, I say that to say this, we are very, very proud of and, and but the fitness is very, very key. And to keep constantly putting this information out to our community, it's heated and keep it, keep it going. So great job.
Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Did I freeze again?
You broke up a little bit, but one thing, one thing I did.
Okay, great.
One thing I did learn is don't sleep on the grass. It's green. There's reasons it's green, especially in the middle of the night when the sprinklers go on.
Oh, oh.
Got it.
See, yeah, so you can't teach an old dog a trick. So then, all right, thank you so much, Joel. Go on. The next is something uh, proclaiming September 15th through October 15th, 2020 as Latinx Heritage Month in Daly City. And what I would like to do is turn it over to Eduardo, Eduardo Bolanos, uh, who's a Recreation Services Supervisor and Ms. Abigail Corcio, Daly City Youth Advisory Committee Member. I think this is the first time we had a youth advisory committee member uh, at our council meeting. And uh, we are so proud to have you. So I'll turn it over. Take it away.
Oh, I believe there's a proclamation, someone.
Oh, yeah, there's a proclamation, uh, Eduardo. I think it's only appropriate that we read it first. And uh, I see a little baby there. How old's your baby?
He's uh, 20 months, 20, almost 21 months.
Oh, oh, stop, stop hiding the baby's face. We want to see, uh, okay, okay, Stephen, you cut the floor, please. Thank you.
So this is a proclamation proclaiming September 15th through October 15th as Latinx Heritage Month in Daly City. And it says whereas each year we take time to recognize how California's growing Latinx population enriches our state and strengthens our cultural and economic ties to Mexico, Spain and Central and South America. And whereas according to the most recent statistical data, the current Latino slash Hispanic population in Daly City is more than 25,000 or roughly 23.6% of the city's population. And whereas Daly City is, has a foreign born population of 52.3%, ranking sixth among US cities with populations of 100,000 or more, including 12,000 immigrants from Latin America. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Week was first observed in the United States in 1968 and was expanded in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. And every year since then, it has been commemorated in Daly City with an annual celebration since September 2002. And whereas as part of Latinx Heritage Month, Daly City also commemorates the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras and Nicaragua on September 15th. And further commemorates the independence of Mexico and Chile on September 16th and September 18th respectively. Now therefore, I on behalf of Glenn Sylvester, the Mayor of Daly City, um, and on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2020 as Latinx Heritage Month in Daly City. And does hereby encourage all citizens to join in learning about and celebrating the contributions Hispanic and Latin Americans have made to our community.
So, so thank you very much. Um, so myself, I grew up in Bay Shore actually, which is fitting that I was here for this meeting. Um, and as a, you know, young Latino boy, uh, growing up in a very diverse neighborhood where you know, I, I felt like I had people that may, may not look like me, um, but were like me. Um, and that's the importance of this month is that um, Latinx, the Latinx community is so diverse. It goes by country, by region of that country to family. Um, and each family has its own history and its own heritage. And I mean, he ran off, but the reason that I want to make sure that, you know, this is represented every uh, year is that, you know, now I have a son that I can pass on my heritage, my legacy, uh, my family's legacy by learning. And it reignites my curiosity to find out more about who I am and where I came from. Um, so, and in light of COVID, where we would normally have a big celebration with over 200 of our community members and information booths. Last year we had a food truck, performers, um, because we can't do that. Um, library and recreation will be celebrated by uh, social media posts. We'll be putting different things out there, um, just, you know, scattered throughout the uh, month to celebrate uh, Latinx Heritage Month, so. Um, and I wanted to make sure that Abby uh, was here because she is one of our um, Daly City Youth Advisory Committee members. But she's the only Latina on that board, so I thought it's fitting that she'd be here uh, to, you know, rec, to help recognize the month. Um, and she'll actually have some videos on there on our page and on the Daly City Youth Advisory Instagram of her making pupuses and another recipe with her mom, which is so cool. So, so thank you very much.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to
Thank you, Eduardo. Uh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry about that, but yes, I just wanted to say thank you because um, being Latina is very important to me personally. And I'm very happy that this month will be able to get uh, celebrated by Daly City because I'm very proud of where I come from. And I'm even wearing my shirt from El Salvador, but yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. Mayor?
Is he there?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Vice Mayor. Uh, I'm still having issues. I'm gonna move. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, thank you, Eduardo and Abigail. I think um, you know, it's, I, we're not celebrating like you mentioned last year, but being able to continue to celebrate virtually. And I love that both of you are here and Abigail representing this very intergenerational celebration of the continuity of celebrating culture and heritage. Um, Eduardo, um, you know, I have a 20-month-old baby who uh, does have Latinx heritage and is so important for him to also know his roots on that side of the family. And so um, it's, it's wonderful to see young people here uh, that are very um, proud of their heritage. And exactly as you mentioned, growing up here in Daly City, Eduardo, uh, you know, it's, it's that multiculturalism and diversity that we saw and continue to see that is so special in the city that we have. So um, just looking forward to celebrate. I will be watching online and supporting and reposting um, for Latinx Heritage Month. So congratulations, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, Pam, please.
Yeah, thank you. Well, Eduardo, that they hear that you came from the Bay Shore is, is so wonderful that it just happened to be here tonight is no, no accident. So because it still blooms with the Latinx heritage over in that area and throughout Daly City, as you know. And to have you as on our staff and you are head of the advisory, the student advisory. I mean, you do so much for us and that hopefully we can celebrate uh, all the Latinos and the, of every background. Like you say, they all bring something, you know? Everybody brings something different to the table, but at the same time, they bring the heart. And when you bring your corazón to the table and it all the same, right? It all beats and it beats to that beat, the Latin beat that we all celebrate so much and have so much fun. And that's part of the, that beautiful culture that you come from. And that is a part of the dancing and the music and, and uh, life, celebrating life. So um, and to Abigail, so from El Salvador, you know that it is a beautiful, beautiful place, beautiful hearts, beautiful souls. I've had the unimaginable experiences of going to every Spanish-speaking uh, country and throughout my life. And it, for me, the heart filled and the warmth filled and they, and they just bring you in, you give you empanada. You know, they're just the little small things, but about the food, just like many other cultures, right? But uh, to be a Latina and some people identify as Hispanic is that in Daly City, we want to make sure that everyone is included. This is inclusion. And when we celebrate together, we want to share it with other people that are not from that. So you can, and I see that in you, Abby, that you can celebrate and Eduardo being there with you. I know that's a great experience as well. So we're so blessed to have you in the community and looking forward to it. And maybe dancing uh, is a big part of it. So I look forward to the music and reposting and, and figure out maybe even if it's not just this month, that maybe we can do a virtual um, some kind of celebration and, and figure it out. When we figure out more about where we at with the COVID, cause I know Eduardo and, and Abigail, there's many things we can do about it. But thank you, thank you from my heart to yours. It's uh, very special. So very corazón. So uh, gracias, todo. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Que bonita.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember De Giovanni. Do we have any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment um, very briefly. Um, Eduardo and
Yes.
and Abigail. Hope my internet is not messing up right now, but I just want to say thank you for all the work that you do for Daly City. Um, I think coming from a city council, the only council, city council in the state of California that passed our support for ethnic studies model curriculum, like we, we really appreciate um, this celebration, right? And I encourage everybody to, you know, pick up books, pick up and understand the histories of the diaspora of, of Latinx. Um, also talk about like even the history of this land, like we're on occupied Ramatush Aloni land, right? And this is, this is indigenous land and, you know, the work that we do here is to um, the work of the ancestor of this land to take care of it, but also recognize, you know, the original peoples of this land. And you know, to know that in, in the spirit of like, um, a lot of my mentors, where they start their classes with this poem with, of In La Que. Of like, you are my, you are my other me. And I feel like is, you know, we respect other folks like, like we're respecting ourselves, right? You only, you treat yourself, like if you hurt somebody, it's like hurting myself. Or if I treat other people and we treat other people the way you want to be treated. So um, thank you. Um, and you know, I'll be there to support in the virtual land. Right alongside y'all. So thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Rod. Um, I won't belabor this. Excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Rod. Um, I won't belabor this because we can go on all night, but I invite everyone to, uh, stick around, uh, to see Eduardo in, in action. And, uh, I, you know, when I saw your face this evening, I said, oh, I know him. So, uh, uh, I, I see another side, uh, in Daly City and knowing that you are in staff, uh, is very good to know. Abigail, I want to let you know, I've been watching you and you have a wonderful smile. And I want to compliment you on that. And number two, I appreciate your service on the Youth Advisory Commission to take a part in what this city does. It really means a lot to me and to all of us. So I, I wish you the best. Please stay involved. And, uh, we all love you. Thank you so much. Am I still breaking up folks? I'm trying, like, I, I, I moved my
Mayor, mayor, sound clear.
Oh, good. Oh, all right, great. Okay, uh, Vice Mayor, did, did you make a comment al- already?
Yes, I did, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, got you. Okay, anyone else before we move on? Okay, now to see, uh, Eduardo in action. I'm gonna turn it over to, I want to turn it over to, uh, Ms. Denise Brown, our Recreation Services Manager. Uh, this is something that came as an idea and Denise, uh, it was brought to her and she took it upon herself to say, let's do it. Let's see what we can do. And, and, uh, without further ado, I want to turn it over to Denise. Denise?
Thank you so much, Mayor Sylvester. And thank you, um, City Council. Uh, before I go into Daly City Sliced, which you're gonna really enjoy because everybody enjoys food. So, um, I wanted to give you a little overview, um, real quick about kind of where we were, where we were and where we are now in recreation and library. Um, when the pandemic obviously hit all of us, it kind of impacted us, impacted us in a different way, department to department. Um, recreation and library, we are hands-on. We serve the community. We are in an after-school setting with the kids, um, with the seniors and all of that. And when the pandemic hit us, I, I can't say that we stopped. We slowed down, we reevaluated, and we redefined who we were. And the senior program took the lead in providing senior meals to all the seniors that were in need. Um, Opal and her crew stepped right in and our senior lunch program is now a delivery and grab and go program. We serve almost a hundred and fifty seniors on a weekly basis, providing about seven hundred and fifty meals. Um, Edgardo is one of the staff that supports that program and, um, it's flourishing. Uh, we do a delivery, we provide five frozen meals a week to the seniors. And three of us deliver the meals to the seniors and then we have a grab and go where those seniors that can come and pick up the meals on a Monday. So that's been amazing and, um, truly appreciated. Everyone has stepped in and moved forward. Um, we also do friendly calls for the seniors, um, providing an opportunity for them to reach out and engage with one of us. If they have a concern or a need, we provide them with a resource to, um, get them to that next level of whatever they need. Our virtual recreation stepped up and stepped in and, um, really moved us forward in communicating through our social, social media platforms. Um, and Edgardo and his crew have really done an amazing job in getting that forward. Uh, Romeo Benson has also been really deep into that. And we've also partnered with the library. They have stepped in and done curbside uh, deliver, uh, pickup for their library locations. And we partnered with them on a rec and reading program where they provided, um, the reading component and then our staff provided a virtual, um, cooking piece to pair off with each of the different books that were advertised. Um, the library is also doing, uh, Storytime online, so make sure you're engaging with that because they're really good at engaging the community in, in that regard, and it's been amazing. And then, um, our final thing that we've partnered with Second Harvest Food Bank, which is what you're gonna see the Daly City sliced. Um, we now do a Thursday, uh, distribution at Westlake, uh, serving five hundred, um, people. In a, every Thursday and then on Fridays, the second and fourth Friday, we're at Westlake serving five hundred. And then we just recently transitioned up to Ceremony on the first and third Fridays to partner with, um, our Pastor Wendy and Second Harvest, providing a thousand um, residents with, uh, meals throughout, um, Daly City. So with that, we were chatting with our partners at Second Harvest and we really wanted the community to understand what they were getting and how they could use that and incorporate that into meals. And so, again, uh, Mayor Sylvester said it, the, the idea came to me and I looked over at my staff and I'm like, you're gonna do this? It's gonna, it's gonna happen. And sure enough, September fifth, it happened. And it was amazing. We had judges, uh, Mayor Sylvester was one of our judges, myself, two representatives from Second Harvest Food Bank and one of my part-time employees that does, um, the cooking projects virtually for the community. So, um, without further ado, I would like to introduce you to Daly City Sliced and be happy to answer questions afterwards. Thank you.
Okay, can you guys see this?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet? Okay, here we go. Let me pass pray.
One hour to prepare two meals to all our judges. Get ready to find out what you commit using produce from Second Harvest of Silicon Valley. Here in Daly City, Ralph, present.
Thank you, thank you. So that was just a tidbit. That was a preview. And if you want to see the whole thing, please go to our YouTube at Daly City Rec at Home and you can watch the whole thing. Now, the food looked great. It tasted great too. I was one of the judges. David Zetzer, Brian Flowers, Opal Fuller, and Angelo Ignacio were the
Wow.
chefs. And it was a great time. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Or Edgardo too. He was our amazing host.
Mr. Mayor?
Great. Uh, great. Thank you Denise. Uh, Councilmember Dejavani.
I just want to say it's so outstanding that, that what, even from the beginning, when you went through the whole list of how you guys readjusted Denise, that, that you didn't miss a step, like in serving the community. You guys just continued it. I can't be any more proud of, because actually always, it's so overwhelming with the heart that you guys serve the community because you guys are a part of the community and it shows. It really shows. Everything from the Second Harvest to the Opal in the kitchen and serving the, the meals, the deliveries. I mean, the COVID hit and you guys had really no downtime and you just did it. And I, and I know it was like probably, and you didn't even act like you didn't complain, nothing. Everybody pitched in from every area. Everybody readjusted. Everybody was just there knowing that how they, how they could serve the community. The library came in, they did the curbside, and you guys coordinated together. I mean, I, it's, it's incredible. And to the city manager, um, it's, we are so blessed to have all of you Denise. And, uh, now seeing the sliced, it's so invigorating. It's a positive. It's so like in this, these days and times, this is what we need and showing the talent off of Brian and David and, and order a host. Wow, this is, this is great. And calling the name sliced, even that. So, um, the food looks delicious. We can't, you know, uh, my virtual, but um, if this is just the beginning, I cannot wait to see what is next. So, um, hats off Denise and everyone. Please give everyone a heartfelt thank you. And, uh, that cohesiveness, the family unit that is built with you guys is truly family. And I feel that every time I'm over there, much less during this COVID, that, um, that you guys do work together like, like a loving family, not just any family, loving families, knowing what needs to be done for our community. And, uh, with all the, the same faces that come through, looking for hope, looking for something to eat, nourishing their bodies and their souls. You are also with the, with the, um, when they're able to call you, I've already had feedback from seniors saying just to hear your voices um, really has helped them being isolated. And, um, all those programs that you picked up and did, there's, um, not enough words, but you should know that heartfelt thank you. And I try to like, when I see that, I get so excited. I, you know, I'm always typing my little heart, you know, how I am in that little, little comment section. And, uh, because I can feel it. I can really feel it. So thank you Denise. And to everyone over there, Opal and Brian and David and Eduardo and everyone. There's just not, and Leslie and everyone that took, took charge and just readapted themselves. It shows what people can really do with heart. And we have heart here in Daly City. And to our rec and library and all the departments. It shows when the times are tough, that you guys just keep going. So incredible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejavani.
And I saw the mayor, the judge.
Uh, do we have any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please do, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. Yeah, you know, it is phenomenal. That's what I'll say. Phenomenal to see just the pivot of the rec and library to be able to, uh, continue services in a dynamic way to our young people and our seniors. And it shows a lot of creativity and it also shows a lot of care, continued care for our community from being able to shift to, um, you know, virtual and also keeping in touch with our seniors who really look to that, um, not only for the food, for the program, but really that interaction. Right? The interaction, seeing one, one another and having to pivot, you know, they may not all be on digital, but you know, calling them is so important and hearing that voice, um, is, is so special. And I think that teach and every one of you who really thought of ways to continue to connect what you are publics, uh, facing, uh, over City of Daly City on there, on the front lines and, uh, to see how it's pivoted, um, in a very exciting manner. Um, even that sliced, um, uh, series, right? Well, it'll be a series. And showing people, look, you know, I mean, this is the food you're getting and you can actually create all these dishes. I'm sure Ma- Mayor Sylvester ha- has some comments about the, the food he down the line, but it just is really amazing around really community coming together. And it's really kudos to the staff and each and every one of you really moving in these unprecedented times and so proud, really so proud to see what has transpired. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, anyone else?
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I want to say that, I don't know if, um, many of you know this, but I actually tried out for Master Chef many, many years ago. And, um, I actually made it through several, uh, rounds of it. And so when I saw this, I got really jealous. I mean, I was like, I want to do that. But, um, yeah, so I think this is just a, a, a great idea and it, and it, uh, it, it makes you feel proud that you have, you're living in a city that is, uh, innovative and, um, has these great ideas of, of how to, um, uh, really get creative, uh, with food. And, um, so I, I applaud, uh, you and your staff for coming up with this and the execution and I'm, I'm ready to see more. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. Uh, okay. Well, Dr. Rod, did you, did you?
Yeah. Go ahead. I just want to, um, commend Denise Edgardo again for, um, just reiterating everything on the council saying, like, learning how to pivot um, in these situations. And, you know, it's easy to just pack it in and be like, oh, we got no zit, you know, but finding another way of being creative, being, finding another way of engaging our citizens. And you know, one thing that's beautiful about going online is that we're not just like reaching our, um, you know, our citizens, our residents of Daly City, but now we're being global citizens to the rest of the world to show what Daly City is about and to show like the talents that we have, what we do in our city, that we're not just this quiet suburb city, but we're actually doing, doing something really creative. So thank you.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Rod. All right. Uh, I'm gonna start at the top. And, uh, Ms. Malpe, I want to let you know that we, and I, I especially am so proud of the staff that we have in Daly City. The, what they do, Denise presented another side that I wasn't too aware of, and that's recreation and libraries. She has opened up my eyes as to how important both these divisions are. And you ought to be commended. And Denise really made you look good. And, uh, you know, I, I can, I can go on and on. Now, uh, getting to, uh, Ray Buena Ventura, Councilmember Buena Ventura, he is exactly correct. Have tasted his food and that man can burn. So if we gonna do something later on, please consider uh, calling him in. Now I see Leilani smiling. Leilani, this is for you. When I, you, I did not hesitate for a moment because it has something to do with food. I am there. So Leilani, thank you for the opportunity and giving me a call. Uh, for Eduardo and Denise, I said it on this, on the, on the clip, I can't stand cauliflower. But when Opal and, uh, was cutting up everything, I, I said to myself, I'm, I'm not gonna eat that. But the dish, uh, some curry with a skewer of tomato and, uh, I think it was turkey on it. I mean, curry is not something that you eat every day. And, uh, it was outstanding. Uh, the, uh, the other gentleman, uh, made something, um, loco moco. And loco moco with the gravy up on top and you can add radishes to it and Jaba rice. Oh my goodness. So Pam, you were asking, I, I wonder how it tasted? Oh my goodness. Uh, uh, words can't explain. And you also see the personalities involved there. And to see the other chefs, uh, one chef even said, I give up. And, uh, but that wasn't on tape. And, uh, but they worked together. So, um, I, I, I don't know. It, 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 kudos to everyone. And, uh, Denise, I commend you as well because you really pushed it and you let them, uh, go. Now, uh, Vice Mayor and, and Councilmember Buena Ventura, we had a Mother's Day feed and a Father's Day feed at PBRC. We fed over a thousand people and the work involved to put that together required weeks. And to hear Denise saying, that's how many people we feed within a few days every week. I mean, believe me, others talk about Daly City. They say Daly City does so much and, uh, we would like to do what Daly City does. So Shawna, keep that in the back of your mind because other people are watching. And, uh, it's all your staff that makes you look good. And, uh, I, I'm proud of all of you. So thank you so, so very much. And, uh, we are going to be, and we are going to stay on the map. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So anything else before we move on? All right. Thank you all so much. Uh, uh, I have to ask my wife, Dino, what are we eating tonight? We got something to eat? All right. Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion for the special meeting July 22nd through July 27th. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the minutes?
We got a first, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any oppose? Any abstentions? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda unless there are some items to be pulled and please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Vice Mayor. I just would like to pull four, six, seven, and eight.
Okay, four, four, six, seven, eight. Got it.
Thank you. And then back to Vice Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, the item I was going to pull was already pulled. So a mo- motion to approve the agenda with the items pulled.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motions on the floor to pull items four, six, seven, and eight. With the exception of those items, a motion has been made. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that, the consent agenda has passed and we will start off with item number four. Councilmember De Giovanni, since you pulled those items, you can go ahead with comments, please.
Yeah, I was just, authorization, the city manager to execute program supplement for active transportation program funds for the Central Corridor Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements Project. The reason for pulling these items is that it lets the people know that even through the COVID, that our staff and everyone were moving forward and making things safe. And I would like, I don't know who's in charge of this, the city manager, to make comments and explain some of this. Or is it Mr. Chu? Hi, Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Director of Public Works. Please, this is exciting. Thank you so much for, for being here.
Sure. Yeah, this item is additional grant money that the city had applied for. This is an ATP cycle two grant that the city council back in May of 2015 authorized staff to apply for this grant. In 2016, the council did accept the grant in the amount of $2,019,000. The city was successful in our grant application and was awarded the, the two plus million dollars. In 2017, the council did approve the $300,000 for the design phase of that project. And the 1.7 million and 19,000 was for the construction phase of the project. And so that's where we're at right now. The design has been completed and the 300,000 has been reimbursed to the city. We are in the process now of moving forward with the construction portion of it. And so that's what this 1.7 million, $19,000 is for. The project is called the Central Corridor Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project, and it includes both pedestrians and bicycle improvements. And it's primarily covers the major east-west corridor along Westmore, San Pedro, East Market, Guadalupe Canyon. And then it also addresses the, the major north-south corridor along Junipero Sarah and Mission Boulevard. Currently, now that the, the design has been completed, the cost estimate has increased and preliminary estimates is that there's going to be a need for approximately another $400,000. We don't know for sure yet at this time until we go out to bid the project. And so when the time comes, after we have received bids, we will return to council if needed to request appropriations to, to cover the full cost of the project. The recommendation for tonight is basically for the city council to authorize the city manager to execute the program supplement and other necessary documents for the grant fund reimbursement for the $1,719,000. So I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that the council may have. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Chu, that, that even, you amaze me when you and your team for grants to help our city and you continue on. You two have not missed a beat during this COVID situation and work has continued. And so that the public can hear that although they may not be able to come in and city hall is a little different now, that work does continue and it does do it in the best interest. And there are grants that are being fruition that is helping the safety of our community and that continues to go on. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to leave it to my colleagues to if they would like to say anything. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilmember De Giovanni. Are there any other questions for Mr. Chu?
No, but I just want to say thank you for that.
Hearing done. Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you for that clarification, Director Chu, as far as when this grant was actually initiated in 2015 and really how it came into fruition. And, and now it's actually being implemented. So I think that was great that you were able to provide that insight and also that history. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's the mayor.
Okay, Mr. Chu, were you going to add any additional based upon the Vice Mayor's comments?
No, I just wanted to thank the council for their support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Are there any other comments from Mr. Chu at this time? Okay, hearing done. So we'll take a vote on item number four. Motion is to approve item number four. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, that motion is passed. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is item number six. Setting time and place for a public hearing to regarding short-term rentals and adoption of short-term rental fees. Councilmember De Giovanni, did you need a presentation or you want to provide a comment on it?
Um, yeah, this is just for, for me, having this on the consent agenda. I know it is just, just a set of hearing. But I was, I was just wondering, of course, it's up to the mayor, Vice Mayor and colleagues, if there would be any chances of being able to engage people at a later date at this time because we're in the middle of COVID and some people still do not have access to our meetings at this time that would like to chime in, but I don't, I want to like to hear from my mayor and Vice Mayor and colleagues. I didn't know where you guys were at on this particular issue.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah, if we could change the, to another time.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, Councilmember De Giovanni, you're asking to ta-
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
You went in and out, Mayor.
Okay.
No, you went in and out. You're clarifying.
Okay, what I'm hearing is that a request by Councilmember De Giovanni based upon what we would like to also do, but the request is to table this matter to offer additional time for the community to comment. So before I turn it over to the city attorney, I'll entertain any other comments or feelings of the rest of council.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, may comment on this item. You know, I, I think, I think it's important that we do move forward with this, but not today. I mean, it's something that's been on our agenda for quite some time, but given that, you know, there is, we are not necessarily in normal times. I think that we should move this to a, a later date. But I do want to emphasize that this is something we, we need to finish and move forward with as, this is all interrelated to some of, you know, the items that we've implemented as far as our TOT tax, I mean, more so even now with kind of where we're at economically. And so I think we should do this at a later date, but I think it's also something that we need more time on, but we definitely need to tie up sooner than later. So I, I'm, I'm happy to give more opportunity to community members. You know, that's always been the purview in, in my respect to hear if there's any other discussion or any other input that needs to occur.
Mr. Mayor, if I may go next? Okay.
Okay.
May I go to Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, Mr. Buena Ventura, please do.
So I think we, we have to sort of move this along as, as the Vice Mayor said. But I actually would like to go with the recommendation that we move it along to the September 28th meeting. And here's, here's what I, what I think. So we have been taking input and going back and forth on this for a very long time. And we are losing revenue opportunities because of the delay in not getting our policy done. And so when, when we say we're moving forward on the, as, as the staff is recommending on the 28th, what we're doing is we're having a public hearing on the 28th. So the public is going to have an opportunity to fully weigh in again, like they've done in the past. So we've already had the benefit of having multiple hearings where we've heard from them about really both sides. And they, they get to do it again on the 28th. And so if at that point it, it's decided we still don't have enough public input, which I can't imagine we won't, then we can consider moving that for, delaying that even more. But I think we really do need to move this ball forward. And all we're doing today is just setting the, the time and place for the 28th of September. And then I, I assume that the way it goes is, is there, there's going to be a full vetting of the issues. So also I sat on the committee that discussed this a couple of weeks ago. And I was the ones who had a lot of questions about what kind of policy we're going to do moving forward. I'm happy with the staff report and the, the recommendation. And I think you all will get the benefit of reading that. You all will get to ask questions on the 28th. And you can all make modifications or, or changes. But to just delay it to, for, for another date with really no sort of refined focus and purpose, I, I don't think we should do that. So for, for those reasons, I, I think we should move forward on the 28th, discuss it then and see how it goes. But the staff has done a lot of work. We've already had a lot of meetings. It's time to move on. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I say, say something?
Okay, yes, Councilmember De Giovanni.
Well, I didn't know there was a, I guess there's a ad hoc committee that I was not aware of that, on this particular item. And so now that I'm not aware of, that there was, I guess it was relatively new, don't know when it was set or who is on it. And you guys already had a meeting. So, and the fact is that the seniors do not have access. That's the bottom line. And we all know that, that these Zoom meetings do limit a lot of different people. But a lot of people have weighed in, like you said, we did late, we don't want to labor, it's too long. And short-term rentals are really not going on is what my understanding is much now because of COVID. But at the same time, we need to be able to hear from them as well. And so to put an item, that's going to be an ordinance for them that will affect their neighborhoods. I think we need to at least take that into consideration that they are, do not have access, a lot of them, to even these Zoom meetings. So I don't know how we can fix that or rectify. And I do agree that we've had this labored for a long time and I respect the staff. And now I'm just finding out there, there was an ad hoc committee formed on this. And so I'd like to hear from Dr. Rod as well and ask that we still give our seniors a chance. Or at least get them be able to be notified that this is going on because they, they do not know the ones that don't have access to Zoom meetings, which is quite a lot.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments at this time? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd like to clarify in, in regards to the ad hoc committee. I, I'm sure when I, I get other meetings, I get meetings from when my colleagues get, you know, you know, whether it's with the school board or whether it's, you know, another committee with development. It's CC to all of us. And so I, I know I did receive a notice that my colleagues had that meeting. So I just wanted to clarify and make sure it was sent to everyone because it was actually noticed.
It was just a newly ad hoc committee that I didn't know anything about, even if it was notice. It was just created.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there any other comments at this time before I make a comment? Okay, my comment is as such. The information as to the ad hoc committee was noticed to everyone. It is Councilmember Ray Buena Ventura and myself who are on the committee. And later on in the agenda, we are supposed to report out as to our committee meetings. Obviously, we have not gotten to that point yet. Now, this point is to Madam City Attorney, please correct me if I am wrong. This item number six is just, it is not a decision at this time to rule on short-term rentals. Whether someone has access to Zoom, when we have this, I did, apparently we can only do Zoom at this time. If city hall was open, I'm sure the public would be invited. So we would encourage anyone. Can we set a time and date without having to take this off and delaying it to say setting a time and place later on?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I think parts of your question might have cut off. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, I can.
Okay.
And yes, I can. I, I basically.
Sorry, you're breaking up again.
Go ahead, go ahead, Madam City Attorney.
So I, I got parts of the question and I believe your first part of the question is that this is just a set time and place. And with regards to the public hearing, there'll be a vetting out process for the members of the public to be present through Zoom. And also as part of the public hearing process, my understanding is that the planning department, as well as the Department of Economic Community Development, will be sending out notices and pretty extensive notices. And I'll, I'll actually have Tatum respond to that in terms of access. If members of the public are not available to attend the actual meeting through Zoom, because this is publicly noticed and it is also noticed for today, it will be published in the paper. Because this is publicly noticed and it is also noticed for today, it will be published in the paper because it's an ordinance. Members of the publics can also bring in written comments prior to the meeting. Which will be read into the record as part of the consideration for the council as well. And excuse me if I didn't answer the question, but I, I believe one of your questions is that we, can we set time and place? And that will be the actual public hearing. It is set for the twenty eighth. And I'm not sure if the council or Mr. Mayor has a question as to if can be set to another date. That's later than the twenty eighth and the answer is yes, it can, because we will publicly notice it for a date certain. I would suggest rather than tabling it that it be to a date certain so that there is a date to, to vet the issues. But if there is a preference to have a date past the twenty eighth, you can certainly set that at this meeting as well. Because we will notice it accordingly.
Uh, thank you, Madam City Attorney. We were to move forward. For the twenty eighth, there is no guarantee that this ordinance would be passed. Because it may require further vetting. Is that correct?
Yes, and so it is an ordinance, so this, the, the hearing on the twenty eighth is the first reading of the ordinance, which is the actual public hearing. Then you will have a second reading, which isn't necessarily a public hearing, but it's the actual adoption of the ordinance. So there are two readings to the ordinance. And, and it's correct if, if there are significant public comments and, and you're not happy with the first reading. We can certainly make changes accordingly and have another public hearing if needed.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam City Attorney. I'll open it up for additional comments from my colleagues, if you have any.
I, I would make the motion to approve item number six.
I will second that motion. So we have a first and a second. Any further discussion at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just have one quick question. What type of outreach will be done that can outreach people that don't have access? Is there any way we can do that, Ms. Zimmerman?
Um, you mean that don't have access to.
To Zoom.
To Zoom.
Yeah, our residents, given that these, we're under these COVID. Like we should make some kind of a way to, to make sure that there, there's regular noticing, of course, according to the law. But also noticing and realizing that we are, we are, we are doing the best we can. I understand that. Under the circumstances, but this truly is not transparent, these meetings. Be it why it's under these conditions or not, to everyone does not have access. And not everyone has access to, to even knowing about the issues are going in online. I mean, is there going to be a mail?
Yes, there is going to be a mail noticing and I believe that it is, it is broader than the normal legal noticing. And I will defer to Tatum on that.
Thank you, Rose. So given that this is a city wide ordinance change, this isn't one of those normal notices where we send to property owners within three hundred feet. Right. It affects everybody in the city. What the Planning Division has done is prepare. A mailing list where we have notified the neighborhood associations. We have notified people that we suspect are operating short term rental businesses. And we have also notified folks who have called us with complaints about these sorts of uses. So, so that's, that's in the mailing list we've established so far. Then other than that, we use the normal media for. Noticing the meanings that we would for any other ordinance change the city would have. So the city's website, we can mutual or those sorts of avenues to let people know. So that would be how we're, we're, we're noticing people, but there are going to be some direct. Letters, letter notices that certain groups of people will be getting.
So when you say certain groups, Tatum, which I appreciate, thank you very much. I appreciate what you guys are doing. So how does that, when we do that as a city, we're not being open to other people? Like, like, you know what I mean? Not everybody's getting access. How can, you know what I mean? How can we do that as a city when it's not equity, that's not equitable?
Well, that, that would be then mailing everybody in the city.
Yeah, because there's, I understand, but we're under COVID. So for me as a city, we should take extra steps. And we always claim that we're equitable for everyone, low income and, and diversity and whatever. But this is an equitable issue as well, that when people do not have access to, to online or internet or what have you. That we need to be equitable in everything we do. You know, like, you know, it can't just be one group or one group and pick a group, although it's, you know, I understand, I appreciate what you do. But if we really truly are going to do equitable equity and we stand for equity, it needs to be inclusive of everybody's, every person's buy in. Because it is a city ordinance, as you stated, and that it, it affects everyone. So I don't know how we're going to do it, like I know is it a cost thing to it or whatever, but we claim to be pushing equity. And we need to be, do that at every single level, no matter what we do. And especially during these COVID times, people do not feel like they have access to our city. Would be it, even being able to come in, which I understand, and having access to normal services. So they really feel like they're not in touch and that's, that's an issue. Which I know that you guys are doing the best you can and I totally appreciate it. But to be able to think about the true equity of what a, a city can provide, I don't know how we do it. But it just, I understand the frustration of some of the people that call me and their ages are seventy and eighty, maybe eighty. And they want to be included too. They kind of feel like left out, so I don't know what the answer is.
I'm sorry, and I, and I do appreciate your concerns, Councilmember De Giovanni, and I appreciate the opportunity to just chime in a little bit. Can everyone hear me okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so. And I, this is a really good dialogue and this is a weird time right now where local government looks very different than it did six months ago. And we're kind of all, you know, trial by fire here. Um, you know, one thing I, I want to clarify is that the public does have access to the agenda, right? Just they, like they would in an, in a non-COVID time. And so Stephen, I'm going to put you on the spot, but if they were to see that this public hearing was posted for September and twenty eighth. And, and I totally appreciate that it's not just seniors, but the senior population, but a lot of people don't have access to internet, right? And so if they were to submit a letter to the city via email or snail mail. Stephen, can we kind of guarantee that that letter will be read during that public hearing? Is that something we can do that's not, that's not so incredibly different than our other? You know, you know, pre-COVID meetings, but maybe you can make the community feel a little bit better about their voice.
Yeah, we could certainly do that. You know, it, it could be something where we do some posts with the, when the agenda, you know, goes out. And Tatum's got our newspaper ads and all of that. We can do our social media posts, have something on our homepage. And just have instructions for people to send in comments in advance. We already do that with every city council meeting. And this one, we could just really call it out because it is a hot issue. That's not a problem at all. They can still use our open gov. Website, which is our virtual meeting site. But, you know, for those folks who, who don't have internet access, they can definitely send us letters and we can keep them compiled. And share them all with you in advance as well and then have them read out. I can read them out loud. It's, we could definitely do that.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. So my thing is, is that how will they know? Like, like if they don't already have the internet, like you said, which I appreciate that, Shauna, that might work. And then if he can make that as public comment, maybe word of mouth, maybe just like if they make a phone call to the city. Like if they, if they, because they're, they are concerned, some of them, because they don't have the internet, right? But if they phone call to the city and they know that it will be public comment, that would, that would, I think that would be a way to help. And I appreciate that, Stephen.
Yeah, we could think through phone calls. I think I would prefer something in writing. It's easier to compile and read, but we can certainly think, think through something.
Yeah. Oh, I mean, as far as like phone calls, like if they called to get where to mail it. If that's all they have is a phone. Yeah, and you're right, City Manager, it's not just seniors, it's a lot of people in our, our city that do not have access. So, yeah, so we try to think out of the box, so I, I appreciate everybody's input. So it's just, you know, you can understand how they feel out there, so.
All right, thank you so much, and I don't want to belabor this any further. I'm going to call the question on the motion. Madam City Attorney, would this require a roll call vote or?
Just have a motion in a second and a voice vote and any opposition, that would be sufficient.
Okay, great. So on the motion by Councilmember Buena Ventura and to which I seconded to move this matter. Time and place for setting. On that motion, may I have a, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone for your comments at this time. All right, moving on to item number seven that was pulled from the agenda. Accepting and appropriating a three thousand dollar grant from the state of California. Miss De Giovanni, I believe you had pulled this item.
Yeah, I thought it was another positive thing that, that we could bring over here. And the, and someone could explain what's that happy two thousand dollar grant would be. Appreciate it, because then the people will know what is going on in our city. The positive things are great.
I quite didn't, I got, I'm hearing positive things. We know what the grant is from the state of California for three thousand dollars and what it's going to be used for?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Shayla.
Yeah, I can.
That, that was a grant that the library received from the state library. We're very excited. It's, it's from a, a larger program called Lunch at the Library, but it allowed us, we don't do, do lunches in our library because recreation provides that service. But it allowed us to partner with, over the summer with programs that were providing lunches and to be able to. Enhance that program and create community. We actually have expended about half of it and we're, we're looking for our next partner and, and hope to be working with one of the schools that's providing lunch.
Congratulations. That's exciting. Thank you for your hard work.
Yes, we're very grateful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So people know that our libraries are still functioning.
Excuse me, I, you haven't been recognized yet, okay? Can I finish? Thank you. Ms. Anderson, thank you so much for the additional clarification. Now I'll entertain any comments from my colleagues, Miss De Giovanni.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just reiterated, just thank you very much, Shayla. You did a great job in the library. It's nice to know it's still functioning and that you too have had to do a shift and a pivot. So it's, it's been great. You guys have done an excellent job, all the reading of the stories and everything. So with little, you've done a lot and gotten grants, so that's exciting for our libraries. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember De Giovanni. Are there any further comments from my colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment as well. So thank you, Shayla. Again, just to reiterate what Councilmember De Giovanni said in terms of, you know, pivoting. These are crucial times and, you know, I just want to commend you and the library staff. In terms of like, you know, widening and enlarging the scope in terms of serving our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Are there any other comments?
Yes. I see me. Yeah, I want to say thank you, Shayla, and honestly, it's amazing to see online through Facebook. How the library and librarians and librarian assistants have been able to provide story time. You know, it pops on my feed. Of course, I'm still working on, during the daytime, but when I see it, it's pretty amazing to see how energetic they are. As they, you know, virtually tell the stories and really, you know, as mentioned, there's a lot of innovation and pivoting that has occurred. And it's great to see how flexible and thoughtful the direction has been, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other further comments at this time? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve item number seven on the consent agenda.
I should approve item number seven?
Motion by Councilmember De Giovanni, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Rod. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? That matter has been passed, item number seven. Moving on to item number eight that was pulled and that's accepting and appropriating eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in grants. From the Daly City Public Library Associates. And Councilmember De Giovanni, you had pulled that item and I'll let you start off, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just another way to let the people know that the libraries are really doing everything they can for grants. And I think that it's Mr. Nurse as well, but I'd like the mayor to recognize the person, give it back to the mayor. But it's coincides with the great things that D C P L A are done, are done and continue to do to support our libraries. Especially during the COVID situation and thank you so much, Mr. Nurse.
Thank you, Councilmember De Giovanni. And the other comments before we turn it over to Mr. Nurse? Okay, hearing none, I'll make a comment, Mr. Nurse, to you. I want to say that every time I see your face, I know something good is coming down the pipe. And it's a pleasure to what D C P L A has been doing for Daly City, not only tonight, but for all the years past. Without the help of D C P L A. We would not have some of the things or many of the things that we have now. I have to congratulate and thank D C P L A for their ever constant efforts. In working to maintain our libraries and help, even if it comes to the fish tanks and book drops. And, you know, and I can't stress the importance for folks also to join up. And be a part of our public library systems. So thank you so much, Mr. Nurse, and I'll turn the floor over to you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. You know, I come tonight basically to share the, the grants that we've been able to get and be able to make for the libraries. And it's important because we go out and we get grants and, and the foundations that do provide these monies for us. It's important that we recognize them and, and let the people know who they are and who the people are important to us. And think that we're important enough to support. And so the Danford Fisher Hanning Foundation donated three thousand five hundred dollars in February. That was supposed to really go towards our library summer program, but then COVID came along, changed everything. So that money went towards the Summer Learning Challenge. And that, that paid for a lot of what we were talking about tonight. The story time on Facebook Live, crafts and activities and live programs that were hosted on Zoom. And that's something that we have for our young people that was brought through D C P L A. As a result of the support we got from the Danford Fisher Hanning Foundation. And they also were supplemented by Kaiser Permanente, who granted another one thousand five hundred dollars. That went toward the summer learning program. And then a, a number of our members contributed additional funds, which brought the total up to five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the summer program. So I wanted to make sure that we knew that the Kaiser Foundation was also part of that. And lastly, on July first, we have a new, a new group called Philanthropic Ventures. And D C P L A has now hired a, a grant writer to assist us in going out and finding even more sources for grants. And this is a new one that we found. They granted us three thousand dollars, which we passed along now to the city. For additional Chromebooks and for Wi-Fi hotspots. Because those were needs that were identified by our, our.
Because those were needs that were identified by our library staff. And so we want to make sure that Philanthropic Ventures, who is new to DCP LA, is also recognized and thanked. We are happy to be able to continue to do this. This, I believe, is our 10th year. We are between 250, we're approaching now hopefully $300,000 worth of gifts. And we'd like to be able to continue to do more of it. Does make it a little bit harder, but anyone else that is watching out there, DCP LA is still working hard to gather funds from a lot of sources. And we'll do whatever we can. And we hope that people that are members will continue to support us with their pledges and with sharing our story and encourage others to join as well. So we're happy to be able to do our part. And that is basically the, how the money which you identified came to us and how we were able to give it to you. So I'm pleased to be here tonight and to share that with you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nurse, for that history. I cannot recall if you mentioned thanking these folks. And I cannot recall if we've ever drafted a letter. So to the city manager, would it be possible to draft a letter to all of these organizations to be signed by myself and my colleagues and to send it out in a show of appreciation? Would that be possible?
Absolutely, my pleasure.
Thank you so much. And, Mr. Nurse, the internet was breaking in and out. And I'm speaking as a senior. Did you say philanthropic dentures or philanthropic ventures?
Well, it is philanthropic ventures. And we have acknowledged all of these gifts to all of them and thanked them because we were the agency that did make the request. And we thank them on behalf of the city and on behalf of the library. So we have done that for you already, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay. I just want them to have a piece of paper with wet ink to show it's, I mean, not to say it's not legit, but just that extra step. But thank you so.
That's fine, thank you. We're happy to pass it along.
Great. Are there any other comments from my colleagues before we move on?
I do, Mr. Mayor, I'll be very short. This has been echoed many times over. Every time you have delivered, you know, a check to the libraries, it's really, you know, wonderful to see. Because, you know, it goes back to the community and really just that service of being able to partner with you and ensuring that our libraries keep thriving. So I just want to say thank you and thank you to your whole board and wonderful work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, anyone else?
Mayor, I'd like to say something as well.
Dr. Rod, please.
Yes, Mr. Nurse, I just want to say thank you to you and the rest of the DCP LA. Just so appreciative in terms of, I totally understand the whole workings of trying to find money, getting a grant writer, especially when it gets to the point where it's like slim pickings and you're trying to search. And, you know, as a grant writer myself, myself for my organization, it's not an easy thing to do. And sometimes you think you get one of those grants that you think you deserve and you don't get it. And, but you'll get those other ones that, you know, are just so key in terms of providing the necessary resources for the community. So thank you so much.
Pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make mine very short since I thanked in the beginning. But gratitude is not enough. But for years, you've been doing this, Mr. Nurse. Not that, you know, not since you're like 20, but. But at the same time, you've always given back to this community and your board members. And I don't think that people really realize how much you truly give and truly care. And the care comes with the work that you do. And that's a reflection of who you are and the board members. And I know you're very careful about who gets on the board. And they're all hard workers. So we may not see it every day, but we know that you guys all work hard. So please give my gratitude to the rest of them as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. Okay, unless there are any further other comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept item number eight on the agenda. Okay, so we have a first by Vice Mayor Manalo and a second by Councilmember D. Giovanni. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Any oppose? Any abstentions? That motion has passed. Again, thank you very much, Mr. Nurse and representing DCP LA. Keep up the great work. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, that's the end of our consent agenda at this time. The next item on the agenda is item number 11, designation of voting delegate and alternates for Virtual League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Malpe. You should have gotten to know this and subsequently, that's why this item is on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. This item is a matter of formality. So this year is a little bit different than former League of California Cities conferences in that it's virtual this year. And it will be from October 7th through the 9th. It is recommended, as we do yearly, that the city council select and designate a voting delegate and up to two alternates to participate in the annual business meeting on October 9th. So I'm asking council to make those designations tonight, if you will.
Make a motion to designate the mayor and the vice mayor as an alternate.
I will second that. Okay, as a formality, is there any discussion on the motion? Further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
We have a voice vote on this, it's a resolution.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
No problem.
Okay, may I have a voice vote by roll, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. And looking forward, even though I'm going to miss the trip down the Southern Cal, and I'm sure Dr. Rod doesn't feel good about that. But it's a very good conference and we're looking forward to it. And I think we'll save some money this year on that since travel involved and no hotel. So one of the benefits of COVID-19. So thank you all so much. Okay, moving on to, looks like, let me turn the page here. Item number 12, the award of bids contracts, award of construction contract for the tennis and basketball court surface rehabilitation project. And I'll turn that over to Ewan and Chu, Mr. Chu. And Alex, I see Alex, he's here. Okay, welcome. Good evening.
Alex, we're not hearing you.
Yeah, there you go.
Without hearing.
So you?
Got it?
You, do you have headphones plugged in, maybe? No.
Oh, I heard no.
If you jump on and off, sometimes that works.
Yeah, well, I can go ahead and do the presentation. So, yes, thank you, good evening. This is a project for the construction of the tennis and basketball court resurfacing rehabilitation project. And this has to do with rehabilitating our tennis and basketball courts at four of our park facilities. Geller Park, Hillside Park, Lincoln Park and Palisades Park. It'll involve resurfacing the tennis courts and the basketball courts. The tennis courts will also have the nets readjusted to United States Tennis Association standards. And then also, the basketball courts will be restriped to match the new and/or relocated basketball system. The design was prepared by in-house staff. We did that to save design costs. And so we did that in-house with our own staff. We did release the project for bid on August 5th, 2020. And we received three bids. The bids are shown on the table attached to the staff report. The low bidder is Silicon Valley Paving. They are a contractor that has been in business since 1999. And they do hold the required Class A contractor's license. And it's in good standing. They do have references and the references to check out. They've done work for the town of Los Gatos and the city of Rapid City, as well as San Jose Unified School District. The total estimated construction cost for the project is $338,600. This includes the construction cost of $270,880. An additional 25% is needed for construction contingency, inspection and contract administration. There are sufficient funds in the fiscal year 1920 CIP budget. And so no additional appropriation is needed at this time. Staff is recommending that the city council approve the design documents for the tennis and basketball court surface rehabilitation project from the secret determination of categorical exemption, accept all bids and award a contract to Silicon Valley Paving of San Jose in the amount of $270,880. And then also authorize the city manager to execute all necessary contracts to complete the project. So that concludes the presentation and be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Do we have any questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please, Councilmember Buena Ventura.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chu. So I'm just going to forewarn everyone. I made this statement a while at our last meeting regarding the need to examine the way we do business and the need to look into systemic racism and in all the decisions that we make in government. And I bring this up because I'm not sure this is the right time to get into this right now. But I will say that I'm going to be very interested in learning more about the process of how bids are evaluated and analyzed and whether or not the system that we use has these imperfections or biases that contribute to systemic racism and resulting in the exclusion of minority-owned businesses from really getting the bids. Now, I'm not making any allegations about what we're doing here because I don't have any evidence of that. And this is just something I'm bringing to light. But I am interested in finding out if we have a process of encouraging, assisting or promoting minority-owned businesses, in particular with the Black community, to have a full and fair shot at getting these really lucrative contracts. And so, again, this is probably not, I'm not saying that any of that is going on here. But at some point, I think we, as a council, need to have that discussion and figure out if there are ways that we can improve on making the system work better for the minority communities and to see if we can expose any issues of systemic racism that we may not intending to do, but the result effect is the exclusion of those businesses and communities. So that's my comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, may I interject for just a moment?
Please.
Councilmember Buena Ventura, you have some keen sense of timing, actually, because we have a fabulous new finance director, Timothy Nevin. And he has a huge list of things that he's working on in the finance department. And in fact, I'm not putting on the spot now, Mr. Nevin, but the RFP process is at least in the top five as far as better transparency, better process. It's not necessarily being looked at right now because of systemic racism issues. However, now that you've brought that to light, it's certainly something that we will add to the things that we research. So perfect timing, Councilmember Buena Ventura. And I know that Mr. Nevin is taking notes right now as we embark upon a more transparent RFP process. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Shawna, that's great. That's terrific. Thank you very much.
So if I may.
Okay. Am I coming through okay?
You're clear, Mayor. You're clear.
I moved from my bedroom back out to the kitchen and you can't fool the computer. Anyway, thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura and Ms. Shawna. Just a note, we're hoping to address some of these issues, systemic racism throughout. And not only in our financial procurements and contracts, but, you know, maybe, and this is just a note, in hiring practices as well. So I would invite you to, and Madam City Attorney, to look at the Rooney Law, R-O-O-N-E-Y. And we can get off of these issues. So I'd like to thank Councilmember Buena Ventura for researching this and something that should not be put on the wayside. But that's just a comment. Mr. Alexander, you and you're back. And I guess your boss gave the presentation already, but could you at least say hello so that we know and we can acknowledge you? Nope.
Still not working.
Okay, at least I gave, okay, he tried it again. Go ahead, Alex. Nope. Okay. All right. Where was I? On track for tennis and basketball court. Thank you, Mr. Chu, for the presentation. Then you have further comments from my colleagues.
I do have a comment in regards to the item itself and really enhancing, you know, our recreation facilities. As mentioned, the tennis courts and the basketball courts. I think now more than ever, as people have been sheltering place these areas for exercise and just being able to kind of be outdoors for a little bit. Of course, with safety precautions with your family members or whatnot has been really crucial for people's mental health. And so for really being able to, you know, enhance these facilities that really need that renovation as far as asphalt, et cetera, for basketball and tennis. I know that our, you know, community members and the people that utilize these facilities will be very grateful.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other further comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll just make a short one. Mr. Chu, this is just another way, like even in the prior ones, that you continually, your department, all your personnel, continue to try to do what you can and try to keep forging through this COVID and making sure that we stay on track and providing everything for the community that they would like to use. And we do know that, I know the other ones, but I think that if they say about traffic or whatever, Geller is probably one of the most used courts. Geller is probably one of the most used courts there is because I believe they wanted the lights on and everything else. So that goes along with the improvement of that area as well. So I appreciate, this is going to be some positive things for the people in the community. That they need this and appreciate it and continue to work. And thank you to all your staff. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejavani. Any other comments? Okay, I'll make one. Ms. Malpe, this is for you. I wanted to say, under your leadership, we could just hold this money back, especially in regards to deferred maintenance. And this is, it goes to show, you and your staff and Mr. Chu, even though we would like to hold the money, but these issues need to be taken care of. So in going with what the Vice Mayor coined for the community, I see that great work is being done. And it must be done because if we don't do it now, it's probably going to cost more later. And if I'm not mistaken, I also recall the lights were put back on at Geller Park, you know, during daylight savings time, so folks can utilize that. So outstanding job in your leadership, Ms. Malpe, because prior leadership would rather just hold the money and say, we don't have any. So great job. Okay, so is there a motion on the floor for item number 12? Okay, Vice Mayor, did you, did I hear you make the motion and Councilmember Dejavani seconded?
Yes.
Okay, great. So on the motion, is there any further discussion? Okay, may I have a voice vote, please, Madam City Clerk?
Ms. Dejavani?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Okay, that motion carries. If we can, I'd like to hear more from you, Alexander, as time permits and in the future. You have not and will not be forgotten, so we hope to see your voice to go along with that great smile you have as well. Thank you so much. Okay, item number 13, award of construction contract for the 2019-20 Original Daly City Civic Center Slurry Seal Project, Mr. Chu. And Rogers.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm going to turn it over to Dave Rogers, one of our associate engineers, for the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Since 1998, Daly City Public Works has undertaken a comprehensive street pavement preventative maintenance program. The annual slurry seal projects is a, is the most cost-effective means to preserve the street's pavement condition and thereby reduce long-term pavement operations and maintenance costs. Street slurry seal replaces the fine aggregate stripped away from the pavement surface. It reduces water penetration into the roadway base and thereby reduces the base failure and resultant damage that is more costly to repair. Streets selected to be surface sealed are based on several factors, including the city's seven-year master plan, the city's computer-based pavement management system, the visual observations of the street's public work staff, and other upcoming or associated works projects, public works projects, such as utility or bike lane installation. The construction documents include slurry sealing approximately 14.7 miles of streets within Daly City in the original Daly City and Civic Center areas. The construction bid documents were prepared in-house by engineering staff with the help of the engineering interns. The project was advertised on July 30th, 2020, and four bids were received on August 27th, ranging from 1.5 million to 1.7 million. Determination of the lowest bidder was based on the lowest combined total of the base bid and a bid alternative A. The base bid included pavement repairs and striping work. Bid alternative A consisted of slurry sealing using black aggregate. Bid alternative B consisted of slurry sealing using gray aggregate. The city's specifications call for black aggregate to be used in the slurry seal, which provides for a dark finish into the roadway. VSS International of West Sacramento has been in business since 1974. The bidder holds the required Class A contractor's license, which is current and in good standing. The contractors' references for work performed for other agencies are acceptable, including the County of Santa Barbara and the City of Vacaville. The contractor has also successfully completed Daly City's Slurry Seal and Cape Seal in the same area in project in 2013 and the 2019-20 Crocker Hillside, Juniparceria Boulevard, and San Pedro Slurry Seal Project in 2020. The low bid for the project is 11% less than the engineer's cost estimate, which is based on cost of last year's slurry seal project. If the base bid and alternative A are awarded as recommended, the construction is expected to start in October and finish in February of 2021. We are doing minor striping changes to incorporate the Vision Zero strategies on the city's high-injury network within the project area. These changes include adjusting the limit line behind the curb ramps at stop signs and adjusting limit lines for better alignment and adding green boxes for bicycles at certain locations. The total estimated cost of the 2019-20-20 Original Daly City Civic Center Slurry Seal Project is $1,875,144, excuse me, $1,875,144, including $45,000 for design, a contract award of 1.5, excuse me, $1,525,120 and a 10% contingency and 10% construction inspection and contract administration cost. The original Daly City Civic Center Slurry Seal Project account has $841,000 and an additional appropriation of $1,034,144 is required to fully fund this project. This action will appropriate $1,034,144 of unallocated Measure W funds to the to the account for the original Daly City Civic Center Slurry Seal Project to fully fund this project, which would consist of $698,808.45 from revenues received up to May of 2020 and $335,335.55 in revenues budgeted for the remainder of the fiscal year 1920 and a portion of anticipated revenues for the fiscal year 2021. In 2018, San Mateo County voters passed a measure of a half, Measure W with a half-cent sales tax to improve transit and provide funds for highways and local street projects. Staff recommends that the city council approve the design documents of the 1920 Original Daly City Civic Center Slurry Seal Project. Affirm the sequoia determination of categorical exemption. Accept all bids and award of construction contract for the base bid and alternative A to VSS International of West Sacramento in the amount of $1,525,120. Appropriate $1,034,144 of the Measure W funds to fully fund the project and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary contracts to complete the project. That completes my presentation and we are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Okay, are there any questions for either Mr. Chu or Mr. Rogers? Okay, I have one. Mr. Chu, any of these monies coming from the monies that's coming to Daly City from SB 1?
For this particular project, I believe there was some that's previously allocated. But the new appropriations, all of that money is coming from the new Measure W funds that was passed by the voters in 2018. I don't know if you all remember, but it was kind of, you know, get us moving campaign. And so that was what Measure W was for. And this additional appropriations is primarily coming from the Measure W funds.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Dejavani, did you have a question?
No, sir. I just wanted to thank Mr. Rogers for your report and all the hard work that you guys do in that department. And I think the mayor always remembered, I remember that when you remember when you made the post about the slurry seal, Mr. Mayor?
Kind of. Go ahead.
No, when you were reminding people, actually, he took photos and I'll put it on his post. I think I remember that. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
So that people would realize what they did and everything. I thought that was a great idea because people don't really know the full extent of the project and why we really need to do this and how important it is. So I think that anything we can do to support you and what you do is important. So I thank you and thank you, thank all the workers, please. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you remember.
I thank you, Councilmember Dejavani, for remembering that. If I was 20 years younger and knew what I knew now, I'd think twice before burning rubber on the streets. And so, great job. And again, kudos to you, Shawna, for moving with your staff and making you look good as well. Another instruction project, and I'll be the first one to take pictures and post it up again. This is what our city is doing for you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, hearing none. May I have a, well, may I have a motion to accept item number 13 first?
Motion to accept item number, did you say 13? Sorry.
13. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Rod. Any further discussion? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Dejavani?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Okay, congratulations and thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for the hard work. That motion is now passed. Okay, moving on. You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chu and Mr. Rogers. Okay, the next item is public appearances, oral communications. And what I'll do this time is turn it over to Mr. Stolti.
Okay. Wait with me a second here. The first comment is the first comment is from Nick Ochi Pinti, and it says, "Thank you to all those providing community services around relief and recovery around the city at this time. It is critical to fulfill public services that often would not exist without the energy and time of volunteers. While it is good to see that these services are being provided, I am also concerned that our city and county is not adequately funding services addressing food insecurity, housing insecurity, and homelessness that is increasingly common in our community. I would strongly encourage our city to take more action in funding library and recreation services to continue staffing and expanding these services in addition to promoting and establishing social services that outreach to our community facing the toughest socioeconomic circumstances, especially here in Daly City and North San Mateo County. Thank you." Okay, the next comment is from Marlon Valaderes, and it says, "For helping the seniors without internet, what about phone messages and texting? There are some inexpensive options to text or automated phone calls." Okay, and then I also have two more comments to read. Okay. Okay, the first is from Pastor Marlon Vidalis. He has another comment as well. It says, "My name is Marlon Valaderis. I am a lifelong resident of San Mateo County. For the past nine years, I have served as the pastor of Wesley Community Baptist Church. This church has been part of the community since 1950. The vast majority of our members are residents of Daly City. I became increasingly concerned about our city's safety as I watched them peaceful protests and some very disturbing and destructive moments from various groups, such as Antifa and Black Lives Matter. One of the destructive ideas that has come from such groups is the call to defund police departments. While this may have seemed to be a plausible suggestion to some, we have had months of evidence to see what happens when police are defunded. Those who are already set on illegal and violent acts become more emboldened because they know that the police will become more hesitant to act. Daly City holds the largest population of San Mateo County, and yet we have the most underfunded police department. According to the city website, we have 111 officers, but our current number is less. We have 94. In essence, our police department has already experienced a defunding. To pursue this further would injure a department that is already underfunded. And if current patterns hold, we would consequently encourage destructive and illegal actions that are held in check through our current policing. Last week, I witnessed the excellent response time of our police department. They called 911 to record a verbal argument that developed into a physical altercation across the street from our church. Within 60 to 90 seconds, 19 officer vehicles arrived on the scene. I didn't even get to finish the 911 call because the police had arrived. This is the type of excellent response that we have today. I urge the city council not to succumb to the false message of defunding our police from the Black Lives Matter movement, Antifa, and other voices. Our police and community need more funding so that officers remain well-trained. We need to increase our officer count to the number that we once had. We need to encourage good policing and becoming good neighbors within our community. I am honored to be a part of a city that has the opportunity to show others what our city can do with good policing and common sense governance. Let's make Daly City more than the gateway to the peninsula, but an example of good neighbors and a responsible community." And I have one more comment to read. This one is from Judith Christensen. "Good evening. I am Judith Christensen, community activist, a 37-year Daly City resident, and your city council member for eight years. You on the council and all candidates for political office were fully informed in the candidate guide that political signs may not be displayed on any public property and may only be displayed on private property and then only with the consent of the owner of that property. It is outrageous that elected Daly City council members would violate California and Daly City law to place their signs on Daly City property at the landmark site near the intersection of Hillside, Mission, and John Daly and on state property along Highway 35. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Do you think you are above the law? Are you thinking you can use your political position to get an unfair advantage in this election? It looks to me like you were behaving like Donald Trump when he holds campaign events on the White House lawn. I believe you are wrong if you are thinking that city staff will be too busy or too afraid to take your illegally posted campaign signs down. Do what is right and get your signs of public property and not waste public works time and money to fix what you should never have done in the first place. Reminder, it is a misdemeanor to violate Section 556.1 of the California Penal Code, which requires the property owner's prior consent for any advertising activity, which includes campaign signs. A letter from the California Department of Transportation states, quote, "Temporary political signs shall not be placed within the right of way of any highway," end quote. The department states that you will be billed for sign removal. They are calling these provisions to your attention to avoid possible embarrassment or inconvenience to you and your supporters. Thank you, Judith Christensen." And that's the last couple of comments I have.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Moving on, appointments, board, commission, membership, committee appointments? Anyone? Okay, hearing none. Next item is item number 14, reports, council committee reports. Okay, hearing none. 14A, council committee meetings between July 26 and September 13. I will start off by indicating Councilmember Buena Ventura and I met for STR, short-term rental. committee meeting, to which we discussed updates as to where we were at and what is needed to be done and how to move forward. And we decided that we would set the matter just for hearing on this, tonight's agenda. Other than that, that's all that I have to report. Councilmember Buenaventura, if I've missed anything, please feel free to chime in. Okay, oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Ray.
Oh, no, you're good, I have nothing more than that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right, were there any other council committee meetings between this timeframe?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to respond. I attended the Peninsula Clean Energy meeting back in the end of August. We just talked more about like the type of daily load in August in terms of the increase of energy in, in homes, but also the discussion last month and experiences of rolling blackouts because of the, the high output of the energy grid that was happening. We didn't get a chance to, oh, and we also talked about San Mateo County reach out, reach codes update as well. And then also the possibility of adding another city to PCE. But that's just in the, in discussion, it's not really formalized as of yet. So that's about it from my end.
Great update, Dr. Rod. And again, I'm so happy you're on that committee because I'm hearing a different side of you. You know, besides always getting a historical perspective, you know, which is good, and I look forward to it. But I see that you're blossoming and learning about energy. And thanks to Peninsula Clean Energy, I, I did get noticed and the transparency and the information they're putting out for medical devices. And, you know, I submitted my application and we shall see what happens. And I'm glad the word is getting out towards moving us towards sustainability, so great job.
Now, thank you, especially what's going on today in terms of having the air pollution and all the fires. It's, it's very necessary to talk about how we can reimagine energy moving forward.
Great job, thank you so much. Okay, any other? Councilmember Dijavani, go ahead.
Yes, it'll be a two-part, the second part will be, it's sort of a C-CAG meeting, which is cities and councils for the cities and county for the government. And I just wanted to put this out there in the front, that two of the bills that the governor signed was AB 1077. And that is what we voted on to send a letter of support. And what that is, it removes a chemical out of the, for the firefighters, for the, when they go over there and they do theirs for the flame retardants, so that we can try to lessen the hazardous to our firefighters. And the second one that the governor signed was the bill by Phil Teen that had to do with revamping and putting in new HVAC systems into the schools and possible childcare, so that it would make it for, because of the COVID. So that one also passed and it was signed by the governor. And we also voted to send a letter of support for that one as well. And so that the monies will not come, so that people will know, especially for the HVAC in the schools, it will not be coming out of the people's pockets. So it comes out of a special fund, and that's important for people to know that it will not be coming out of the people's pockets in that particular manner. And I will be giving the second half at the next meeting. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those are two important bills.
Thank you, Councilmember Dijavani, you are absolutely correct. They are very, very important, and I'm sure we'll be looking forward to hearing more on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other council reports? I'm kind of combining them, item number 15 and, and 14A.
Okay. You're combining your at 15 city council reports now?
Well, yeah, I kind of moved, moved on to that too. But if you have anything under 14A or 15, let's go ahead and take care of 15 as well.
Okay, thank you so much. I'd like to report to you all that I was able to join Supervisor Canapa and the county's Mask Mobile. They handed out masks to individuals and businesses in the top of the hill area. And really just one of the ways to ensure that people have access to masks if they can't afford it, and also reach kind of the, the areas in which there may be support. And so I was happy to walk up and down to see if there were businesses or, or essential workers that need them, that are still working in these small businesses, et cetera. And it was not a smoky time at that time yet. So I was able to walk around prior to all the fires. Also, you know, at the Board of Supervisors, along with yourself, Mayor, and Councilmember Ray, where, you know, we were at the county and we really supported a resolution that was about, you know, a resolution condemning, condemning racism and injustice, really declaring racism as a public health crisis, you know, and, and how it really, you know, interconnectedly affects people's health, you know, and it's, and the affirmation of committing to diversity, equity, access, and inclusion. And so, you know, you know, as we've noticed with COVID-19, the most hardest hit communities are people of color communities that don't have access to healthcare benefits, et cetera. And, and so it's really looking at systemically, how do we ensure that, you know, these communities have, you know, access to health, even technology, I mean, it's a holistic approach. And, you know, it was a step forward in, in declaring that, you know, that there's a resolution condemning racism and really affirming its commitment to diversity and that this is important for us to continue to work on. And as mentioned by Councilmember Ray Buenaventura today, you know, how do we look at all aspects to ensure that we continue to always move forward in that direction?
Wow, great. I just wanted to make a comment, Vice Mayor. I think the county got the idea from you in the sense of the Mask Mobile, because I recall you had stating before, you know, you passed this ordinance, you want folks to wear masks, but what about those who probably can't afford it? And I have to commend you on that because you are thinking outside of the box so that, you know, we just need to be aware of this. And thank you for your advocacy and your genuine care. And I'll thank all of council for their genuine care for the community as a whole because that's what, that's what makes us different. So, thank you all. Okay, any other further for city council reports under item number 15?
Thank, thank you, Mayor, for, for that comment, I really appreciate it. I, I also want to comment on continuation of working with the San Mateo County on the Equity Recovery Committee. It's really looking at the long-term plan and recovery of our county. And happy to sit on that committee where we're assessing kind of each of the areas. We looked at public wifi, education and childcare, vulnerable population support, and just overall kind of small business economic recovery. And so in these aspects, we're able to provide input from various community members across San Mateo County to ensure that, you know, our voice is at the table. And, you know, we all have different, you know, populations in the cities that we live in. And that there's also in that respect equitable access because every community is different. And so I'm happy that I continue to sit on that and happy to continue to report on where we're at. But those are the areas we've worked on recently. And I want to also thank Shauna and Stephen again for working on the outreach, public information side of things. I think we need to all work together as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Dr. Rod, I think you were kind of chomping at the bit.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Rod.
No, 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 it's okay, I just saw him smiling and he took mute off, go ahead, Dr. Rod.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I also attended a, the CCCS Racial Equity Action Subcommittee. And one of the things that they're trying to promote is a program under Urban Habitat called the Boards and Commission Leadership Institute, and they're accepting applications right now. And a little bit about the BCLI, it trains and supports leaders from low-income communities of color to influence, influence housing, transportation, and land use policies as decision-makers. They work with leaders committed to advancing equitable policies, help them get into public boards and commissions, and provide individualized support throughout their commission service. You could check out the BCLI website. Let me see if I can pull it up. It's under urbanhabitat.org, and their applications are due November 15 at 11:59 PM. I've had a couple of friends that have gone through this program, and I think there are some folks that are city council members throughout the county that have been, that took part of this leadership program. And when we're talking about this idea of looking at racial equity, it's to provide that support and mentorship to get more leaders in boards and have the training to do so. So that's about it for me, thanks, Mayor.
Sure, thank you very much, Dr. Rod. If you still got that link up, would you stick it down there in chat? So Stephen will take notes, so when I hit up Stephen, what was that site that Dr. Rod talked about? So thank you, would appreciate that. Still on city council, any, any additional? Thank you, Dr. Rod, just got it. Okay, this is just a comment I'm just going to put out there. Shauna, I'm hoping to put together a resolution. Have you seen that picture of the little kids outside the Taco Bell doing their homework utilizing the wifi? You know, as far as I'm concerned, just as the air you breathe, it's free, wifi should be free. And that also includes maybe businesses, if you have, if that wifi can reach outside, maybe a sign posted saying our wifi access code is such and such. You can configure your wifi address to be limited and also give certain passwords to guests. And maybe if we all work together to include those who have wifi in their homes, you know, hey, you want the wifi password? We just need to share, and I, I think we can go a long way in these times of virtual reality and kids are out of school. I mean, we've got to dig deep, and I think we can all contribute. So it, it's just something that I'm hoping to come down the line with that we can do. Okay, anything else on city council? All right, Ms. Malpe, I'm going to turn it over to you for staff. I see a gentleman who's been online for so long, and I hope that you will introduce him to us. He's been very, very patient, and we're looking forward to it. Go ahead, Shauna.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I don't have a lot to report, it's important what I have to report, but, but I don't have a lot, I won't belabor my report out. I do want to say that I'm incredibly proud of our workforce. They're just shining right now, and I'm biased completely, but what makes it feel really good is the council's appreciation of staff. I don't think you know how important it is for people to hear from council about how much you appreciate them. And so, and the community's been wonderful, it's, you know, there's a lot of issues going on in the city. I don't mind Stephen, LeMony, my office, the department heads, we don't mind hearing what's going on out there. We want to hear from you because we don't see you. But so that aside, the pride continues to our most recent appoint, appointee of Finance Director Timothy Nevin. And I feel like I just like kissed a leprechaun because he's fantastic, he's got a wonderful background. He worked in Daly City before and has a wonderful educational background. He worked in the county on their budget process, and everybody knows their budget is ginormous. And he is just a breath of fresh air. I know that the finance staff has gone through a lot of change in the last six years. And certainly the morale has, you know, kind of been up and down. And to bring someone in with not only his background, educational, and his experience, but his demeanor and his care and his passion for employees, we couldn't do better. And I say that from the bottom of my heart. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Timothy Nevin, our new finance director.
Wow, thank you, Shauna, I appreciate that. I am really excited to be back in Daly City. And actually, I'm really excited that I made the decision early in my career in 2003 to become part of local government and to join Daly City for the first time. I'm very excited to be back at Daly City, I'm very excited to be back with the finance department. I echo the city manager's words about the city employees and how much they appreciate the acknowledgement because they really are great and they really do a great job. And so I'm excited to be back, I was excited to see the roster of who was on in the finance department, and I recognized two-thirds of the employees and was happy to meet the other third. So I'm excited to work with you as a city council. In six years, the council has changed since I left. Mr. Buenaventura is still here, and the rest of you are, are new to me. But I look forward to working with all of you, and I thank the city for this opportunity and for the city manager, thank you.
Wow, welcome aboard, Mr. Nevin, I think you're being very, very humble. I think I spoke to someone who said they remember when you were a little baby and you used to run around in the council office. I, I don't know if that's true, but I know that there is some history that you're not alluding to, but I'm not going to say anything, I'm going to let folks figure them, figure it out for themselves. But welcome aboard, sir, a pleasure to have you. And Ms. Malpe, I learned a new term, kissed the leprechaun, wow. I just learned that, okay.
I just learned it too, I don't know where that came from, I, I just, he's, I don't know, I don't know what overcame me, please forgive me for that one.
I love it, I'll use it sometime. Okay, any comments from council on city staff report, Ms. Malpe?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, Mr. Buenaventura.
Thank you. I, I would just have to say, you know, when, when there was the resignation or the retirement of Todd and Tim, I got very concerned. And my stress level went, I mean, through the roof. And then when I heard that Tim Nevin got the appointment, it just really put my mind at ease. I know him, I know his demeanor, I know him to be very professional. And I think we are going to be in really good hands. We need someone that is calm, that is deliberate, and that is smart. And I think Tim has all of that, and I'm, I'm just so happy that we got him back and that we're on the right track to deal with the budgetary issues that we're going to be facing over the coming year. And I think this is a great hire, and I'm looking forward to us growing together with him. So thank you and congratulations, Tim and Shauna, for the excellent pick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buenaventura, any other comments at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Pam, you will first, go ahead, Pam.
Okay, thank you. So I want to say welcome home, because this is really your home, it will always be your home. Because second of all, I know the, your family's just thrilled, but we are really excited when I heard the pick as well. And that city manager, she was just like, I knew, I, well, I had trust in her. But at the same time, you know, it is a big transition, it's really tough during this time for everybody. But we know that, that, like you said, you knew two-thirds, and they were really excited. And that's like, that morale just really, just really boosted because they had no idea who was going to be coming in that door. And that's like, that morale just really just really boosts because they had no idea who was going to be coming in that door. And not only that, you're a great intellect, you have your hands, you have the experience and Daly City is your home. So you care about us, you care about what happens to the city, and that makes a difference, not just because you're qualified. But it makes a big difference because you are dead, you you are Daly City. So when you have people here that really care about that, including Shauna, who's been here, you know, for a while and gone through a lot. Um, this is your family and you'll treat it as such. So uh my hat's off to you and your family. Uh, I remember when we were at the, when David Canapa cleaned that little walkway. But here you are, who would have thought then? But uh, right choice, right timing, everything about it. And um, I I look forward that I'm glad, I know you'll be here to stay. So that that's really encouraging. So thank you, Shauna. Thank you, um, Mr. Nevin. And uh, the community at large is really excited as well, just to let you know that you are home. So thank you. My best to your family.
Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor Manalo.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to say, you know, um, Shauna, amazing, amazing choice. I think, you know, we uh went at first uh it as an interim city manager and then appointed you a city manager. We knew that you were the right person um to be at the helm in regards to the city administration. And now with um, you know, announcing uh Mr. Nevin as uh who's someone is who's not. New to Daly City and and really has a passion and understands the city of Daly City, I think. And mentioning his expertise, you know, this is exciting. I think this is very exciting as we move ahead. Uh, as we know, there are some difficult challenges, but with a great team that you've put together. Um, I I know that we're going to move forward ahead of this. Um, and that together we'll we'll get through this. And so welcome aboard again, uh, but I wasn't there that time. Um, but yeah, it's it's just great to see you again and I know that your family has a long history of of public service and you're continuing that legacy. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor and uh Mr. Nevin. Uh, I guess uh Vice Mayor kind of alluded to it, but I'll leave the rest for everybody else's imagination. If they want to know, they can come talk to you. Um, in in the future to come, we are going to be asking some difficult questions. And the only reason we ask those difficult questions, I'll give you another euphemism, a confused mind will always say no. So don't think we're killing the messenger, but basically we're trying to learn. So we need you to hold our hand and guide us down that path and share some of that wealth and tell us the why. Okay, so uh, Bill, there's nothing against you, but uh uh that's the way uh we've been doing things. And Shauna, congratulations on your great pick. Okay, great. All right, uh, any other staff report, Shauna?
No, sir, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Uh, yes, thank you so much. Uh, just something else just came to mind, but I'm going to wait for the next council meeting. Because we have a meeting on the twenty eighth and uh I'll just give you a quick hint, okay? All right, so the next item before we close is we would like to adjourn tonight's council meeting in memory of the following. And I'll first start off with Councilmember Buena Ventura.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would like to adjourn in memory of several individuals. Let me start with uh Letitia De Silva. Uh, Letitia, um, I got to know her as um. Uh, someone that really enjoyed life. Um, she was very active in the Bury Bury community. Uh, doing her dancing and she's also um um involved in a lot of uh events. Uh, both uh in the community and her professional life as a caregiver. Um, she suddenly passed away and um uh we'd like to extend best wishes to her family and her friends. Also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of James Fang. Um, James was the former president of the Bart Board. Um, and it was a a member of the um uh San Francisco Exam Examiner Publishing Family. Um, he died at the age of uh fifty eight. Uh, he's a very nice guy and um always there for the community and was always very helpful. Um, and then I'd like to adjourn in memory of um uh Esther Bayudan, who is um. Uh, Tony Bayudan's um mother. Um, obviously, everybody knows Tony. He's the um chief of staff to. Uh Supervisor David Canapa and um she passed away on August twelfth, twenty twenty, and they're hoping to have. Um, uh, a tribute to her sometime next year in March. So I'd I'd also like to um adjourn in memory of um. Taz Santos. Uh, so Taz is someone I think we all know. She was a a longtime member of the community. Um, she was a real estate agent but was always always there for community events, very giving and loving and kind soul. And um, she really uh just was would light up a room. She was always very friendly and happy and. Um, it's just really unfortunate that um that uh she passed away uh just recently. So thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. I'd like to um now turn it over to uh Dr. Rod.
There you go. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Amado Kaya Canham Rodriguez. Uh, he is the son of one of my um colleagues in Philippine American Studies from UC Davis, Dr. Robin Rodriguez. I'm just going to read something as a statement from the family. So on August fourth, twenty twenty, we lost a beloved son of our community. Amado Kaya Canham Rodriguez to sudden illness while serving those in need in the Philippines. He was twenty-two years old. Like his parents, Dr. Robin Rodriguez, Epinai, and David Canham, a South African immigrant. Amado dedicated his life to standing up for the people's truth, basic human rights and social justice across borders and communities. He took responsibility for the unfinished struggle of his ancestors, whether it was upholding black lives. Stopping a stadium from destroying working class communities of color in his hometown of Oakland. Or standing among the indigenous populations in the Philippines defending their ancestral domain. Hearing impairment did not stop him from listening deeply to the needs of the people and the stories of his elders. From an early age, he was a needed light of hope and oftentimes a fierce fire in the lives of all who knew him and worked with him. He was an artist, a skilled martial artist, a soccer player and a video game enthusiast, even as he was a student leader. He was an example of selflessness and sacrifice and held a deep well of history, knowledge, curiosity and determination to. Expose and overturn the root overturn the root causes of people's suffering. This would explain his bottomless appetite and need to always bring laughter to struggle. In his last two years in the Philippines, he transformed and found himself truly at home where he belonged. Communities and families embraced him wherever he organized and he truly connected with them by learning fluent Tagalog with an accent all his own. He became and remained larger than life. We have lost him far too soon. Through his beautiful eyes, we will continue to see the world. He wanted to change and follow his example. He is the new ancestor that carved out a new path and a way of being. He is the success story we need to celebrate. He's the epitome of humanity. Rest in peace, Amado.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Uh, Councilmember De Giovanni?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to adjourn in memory. First, I'd like to add to um Tony's mom. The family asked me to let people know that his mom was a resident since nineteen seventy-seven. It's very short. And also that she was able to live and see four generations, including including her first grandson. Which she loved her family so very much and uh she will truly be missed. But it's also with a heavy heart that we lost someone in our city family named Martin Moreno. He worked in our water wastewater department. It was an employee. And let me read this in short. Martin Moreno was employed with the city of Daly City's Department of Wastewater and Wastewater Resources. As a collection system operator from two thousand and fifteen until his untimely death on Thursday, September the third. Martin enjoyed serving the Daly City community in the capacity as in collection system operator. He was a friend to all and was a thoughtful and giving person. He will be missed deeply by all of his coworkers, friends and family. Also in that department and the director Piccolotti. He is survived by his mother, sisters, fiance and daughter Jazzy. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family and with the city of Daly Sa- Si, excuse me, city of Daly City. We offer our condolences to the family and to our wastewater department, all the staff and the workers. Because this has been a hard one on them because it was very unexpected. So um, thank you very much and we have to honor him in memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Giovanni. I'd like to, oh my goodness, my internet connection is unstable. Can you folks hear me okay? I hope you can. Uh, I'd like to adjourn uh in honor of Ms. Laura, I'm I'm sorry, Gloria Jean O'Reilly. And I don't have much information, but uh social media, I thought it was only appropriate because it's so close and in Pacifica. The last I would like to uh uh to provide and I it's kind of giving um an ending to Dr. Rod's uh state. Although we honor all these folks, they are equally important, but you know what's also very important is family. So for the employees within Daly City, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Esther Peñas, I'm no, I'm sorry, Joseph Calhan. He's Public Works Department, David Rogers' uh father, civil engineering associate is his father. And the reason I'm ending on this point is family. For any of you who have close family and especially kids, I cannot fathom the loss of a child. Who has gone before you do as the parent. I mean, uh, Dr. Rod, thank you uh for bringing that. It 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 really brought light to me and uh I, you know, I, you can't see me, but um you ever seen a grown man cry? I can feel it. So uh, thank you for sharing that. Family is very important, family first. But of course, this is not to take away anything from all the other folks uh here uh with us this evening. Lee Chan and Natalie of HR. Tatum, we've heard from you and uh Alexander, we hope to get those issues worked out. But we, as a council, we love you all. You are all family to us and that's what's going to make us stronger. So thank you all so much, everyone. You have a great evening. Stay healthy, stay strong. We are Daly City strong. Good night, everyone.